I believe we're ready to go whenever you guys are.
Okay, all right, everybody's mic on, all right. I'm called to order the regular planning commission meeting for Monday, February one two thousand and twenty-one, hard to believe. I have to read the little script here. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we appreciate everyone's patience. Which should be running out. Planning commissioners and the city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to Malibu city.org forward slash virtual meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called and no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit Malibu city.org forward slash virtual meeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, and so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. I'm told that I still run into too many people who would like to speak or can't get signed in or have problems of one sort or another. Told that there is a telephone number for Parker, our IT guy. That's available on that sign if you go to Malibu city.org forward slash virtual meeting. It'll be his phone number is in bold. So if you're having trouble getting in, getting in. And give him the call. Maybe he can do something to help you out. Commissioners, if you have comments, please raise your hands and I'll call on you so that we can only speak one at a time in order to make the record clear for the public. May I call the roll, please, Kathleen?
Yes, Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Got to unmute yourself, guys.
With your stuff, you're muted.
There you go.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Wile?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Going to do this the way I was taught in the fourth grade at Atlantic Drive Elementary School. Please rise and face the image of the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Chair Jennings, I'd like to move the agenda as follows. As staff recommends with item four C to be held on February sixteenth, continue to February sixteenth, four D to be continued to February sixteenth, four E to be continued to February sixteen, five B to continue to March one, five D to continue to February sixteenth, five E to February, continue to February sixteenth. And I'd like to move item five C before five A. That's my motion.
See here, five C.
I've seen this sewer plant and it's got to be, got to be reviewed tonight.
And you want to move it in front of five A?
Correct.
Okay, that's the motion. Does there a second?
I'll second it.
Are there further discussion? All right, let's vote on it, Kathleen.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January twenty-second two thousand and twenty-one with the amended agenda posted on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. That takes us to item two A, communications from the public concerning matters not on our agenda. Do we have any speakers, Kathleen?
We have a James George, Janice George, Nicole McGinley, Susan Foster, Paula Yankopoulos, and Lonnie Gordon.
Okay, well, let's start with the first speaker.
James George?
He's passing it this time.
He's passing it this time, okay. Next.
Janice George?
Yes, the item that we wanted to speak on five D and five E has been postponed to two sixteen and we will be speaking at that time. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Nicole McGinley?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, happy February, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm Nicole McGinley, Point Dume resident. I've been working with a group of community members that are concerned about the number of cellular wireless facilities, WCFs, being approved in our residential communities. I've seen installations in people's front yards too close to our schools and numerous installations along PCH. Thankfully, the city has been working very hard to update our code so that we can make sure of their safe and strategic placement. I'm speaking tonight because we noticed that you are continuing the LCP amendments which deal with the WCFs. And while this is a very time sensitive issue because of FCC shot clock rules, and I wish it could be heard tonight, I am grateful that it will be heard at the next meeting. Not knowing how familiar you are with this issue, I wanted to please ask that you take special care when reading the LCP amendments from staff that they include setbacks from residences and schools at fifteen hundred feet, fire safety and engineering requirements. And fortunately, tonight, expert Susan Foster will offer more details on this. An updated application and with specific requirements that demand design rigor. And I'm sure that CMS can help with this. Adequate insurance requirements and no pollution exclusions. This is a big one because currently Malibu is left vulnerable without enough insurance. Mandating pollution insurance from carriers that wish to install in our city will protect our city. We appreciate your service to our community and are available for any clarifications to any of those items mentioned, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Kathleen?
Next, we have Susan Foster. See if we find her.
She's there. She doesn't seem to be unmuting.
Can you hear me, Ms. Fox?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Now we hear you.
All right, good. Thank you so much. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Susan Foster and I am addressing four E to be heard on February sixteen. I am an honorary firefighter with the San Diego Fire Department and a medical writer. At the request of Attorney Scott McCullough and resident representatives of Malibu, I was asked to assist with the fire safety portion of the community's ordinance because of my work with other municipal ordinances and my work with the rank and file firefighters of California. I then brought Tony Simmons on board because he is an exceptionally qualified professional engineer. Mr. Simmons is a state credentialed electrical safety subject matter expert. Our shared objective is to help Malibu establish engineering based requirements to address the residents' greatest fear, and that is fire. For Malibu, we wanted to go even farther than any city had gone before to prevent a recurrence of the two devastating fires in the last fifteen years from which Malibu is still trying to recover. But first, we needed to determine who was responsible for establishing whether new, new or existing wireless facilities in Malibu will be or are in fact safe. Our analysis shows that the responsibility for fire protection measures rests with Malibu. Briefly, here's the breakdown. The FCC allows localities to legislate safety regarding wireless facilities. Further, the CPUC in order, general order one five nine expressly states local jurisdictions have safety oversight and that includes wireless facilities. And SCE recognizes non-SCE antennas installed on their poles as quote "safe" expressly because they have been permitted by the city planning departments. Further, there are no rules, no rules for wireless facilities with respect to the electrical code for LA County. Article eighty-six of Title twenty-seven of the Electrical Code for LA County is entitled Public Utilities Exempted. This exemption applies to all wireless facilities that come into Malibu. So the bottom line is that the city of Malibu has both the power and the ultimate responsibility to ensure that the wireless facilities being installed in the city are built and installed to the highest possible safety standard. Malibu can and should have the best electric fire safety protocol possible to minimize liability and maximize prevention. The ordinance and the LCP amendments you will be receiving soon are where this must be done. Together, we can add a superior layer of protection for Malibu. So we urge the members of the planning commission to please look for and support the fourteen electrical and structural engineering documents we are requesting at the application stage of the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen, anybody else?
We have we had Paula Yankopoulos, but I believe she was wanting to speak on the items that James and Janice George wanted to speak with, and since it's been pulled from the agenda, she'll speak next time.
Okay, anybody else?
Nope, that isn't.
All right, thank you.
Chair Jenny?
Yes.
Could I ask Nicole McGinley a quick question?
Right, John, but keep in mind we've got a very full agenda.
No, this is a quick one.
Go ahead.
Nicole, you gave an excellent presentation last time and I haven't kept up on it since then. Has the city changed its consultant?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes item two A. We're now at item two B, planning commission and staff comments and inquiries. Who would like to go first? I'll go first since I don't see a hand up. You know, we have typically had the, we've traditionally done the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of every meeting. For a while, when we went to the Zoom format, we stopped doing it. Frankly, to me, it's it's a little creepy with just the, those of us on the screen doing the Pledge of Allegiance and, and if, if I have consent for it, I would like to put the Pledge of Allegiance over and take it off of our agenda until such time as we're able to go back to live public meetings. And so when we get through this, I'd like to ask each of you whether you agree with that. Now, who else would like to speak? John?
I just wondered, maybe Richard knows if the city council has agendized the change in Zoom meeting and giving of time, et cetera. Apparently, that's what's stalling our, our changes.
Richard?
Not to my knowledge, however, as I have mentioned in the past, this commission, should they decide if you'd like, you could change public comment if you feel warranted from three minutes to four minutes or recall any of the speakers back up to our virtual dais, I guess, our virtual podium to ask them any further questions. But at this time, no, I'm sorry, no other guidance has been given to me.
And it's not been agendaed. The way it has to be, is there a reason?
I, I don't honestly have an answer for that, to tell you the truth. I know that they wanted to talk about concerns, but it hasn't happened.
Thank you.
Craig, you had your hand up?
Oh, yeah. Well, first I'll second your thoughts about the Pledge of Allegiance. And I just wanted to report that I had asked some questions about streamlining the process. Issues about lost documents and getting applications to more of a parallel processing system than the serial processing that has been an issue. And to that end, I had a good conversation with Justine Kendall, the planner about it that this week and about the new grant that the city got for sixty-five thousand. And so I'm just reporting here that they're using that to start implementing a digital system that'll be sort of analogous to Google Docs in that different departments can work on the same final version of the document more or less simultaneously. So I think that's a step in the right direction. I'm not sure how many more steps we need to go in that direction, but and I invite Richard to have any further comments. There may be nothing more to say at this point, or you may want to add something.
No, I believe you summed it up well. We are looking to be more digital. You know, one of the things that would be nice to do is we're looking towards making the PDFs of these packets a bit more user friendly. Because I do understand right now, given the file size, it's easier to use the hard copies in some cases than the digital copy. And we are looking, yes, at ways to, as Commissioner Hill brought up, to do things in conjunction with other departments when it comes to stamping plans and reviewing folks to get them off to construction. Thank you.
And David, you had your hand up?
Yes, I'm not directed to anyone or any subject, but to your points, Jeff, you made at the beginning of the movie, meeting tonight about, you know, patience and last time about how we're keeping people here who are before this, this group to have their projects heard. I'm looking for ways to streamline this entire process to help the people here so they aren't sitting until midnight or going to afterwards, meeting after meeting. And one very small thing I can think to do is to put a cap on the commissioner's comments. I mean, you had suggested moving the whole thing to the end of the meeting, which is a possibility. I accept that as a friendly amendment. But what I'd like to propose is that we say that the, each commissioner has no more than three minutes to give their comments at the beginning of the meetings. We should hold ourselves to the same standards or higher than we're holding speakers to. And I, I guess the amendment to that could be, if you have more to say, say it at the end. But I'd like to see if we could each limit what we have to say to three minutes.
Let's see if we can't do that on a voluntary basis and see how we go. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that. Dennis, you have anything to say?
Um, no, not really. Adrian Fernandez called me today just to say hi, welcome to the commission if I had any questions, which I didn't. And that was it.
Okay, any thoughts on the Pledge of Allegiance? Or do we have to have that brought back as an agenda item?
I have a thought.
Okay, John?
I would like to know from Trevor if there's any state laws or anything. I know virtually every government meeting and school and everything else I go to, they do it. So I'm just wondering if there is a law says you have.
Trevor?
No, there's, there's no law requiring that the pledge be, be stated. So if, if that's an item that, that the council, that the commission would like to direct to have not placed on a future agenda, they can.
Okay, so I've heard a couple. John, how do you feel about it?
Well, to me, it's less than a minute, so I'm ambivalent, but I can go along if people don't want to do it.
Okay, I guess that's, that gives me three. David, you have a thought?
No, I, I, streamlining is better.
Okay, Dennis, anything?
Yeah, I want to keep.
Okay, so that concludes, I believe, item two B from the planning staff, staff comments. Richard?
Thank you, but no, we don't have anything further. Just questions.
Okay, great. That brings us to item three A. This is the, the consent calendar is consistent.
Excuse me, Chair, I apologize for interrupting, but it was brought to my attention that possibly Lonnie Gordon didn't get a chance to speak and had signed up.
And let's reopen item two A and hear from Lonnie Gordon. And let's reopen item two A and hear from Lonnie Gordon.
Okay, my apologies on that. I thought I had called her.
Can you hear me?
Gotcha, go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm not going to take much time because I know you have a large agenda. And the only reason I signed up was to remind everyone that Malibu for Safe Tech is post, is hosting a webinar on February ninth at two PM regarding the use of cell phones, tablets, computers, uh, small cell sites going in, et cetera. We're going to have a lot of people who are knowledgeable, people who are newbies, and I just want everyone to, if you can't attend at that time, to send in your questions. You can sa- sign up at Malibu for Safe Tech dot org. And the, the first page is a sign in and has all the information on our experts who will be discussing this. And that's it. Welcome to the new members, and thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, that brings us to item three A, uh, well, brings us to the consent calendar. And Kathleen, is there any item on the consent calendar that the members of the public have asked to pull?
Uh, let's double check. I don't believe so. Let me just see if there's anyone who signed up at the last moment. That would be a no.
Okay, commissioners, anything you want to pull?
Uh, Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, I think three A one, three B two, three B three, and three B four, for quick questions on each of them.
Uh, that leave much, John? Anything you want to pull?
That was everything but the minutes, is that correct?
Yes, uh, just so you know, I'm not going to have quick questions on three B three and three B four.
Okay, so uh that leaves us with the minutes. Item three B one, did I have a motion on that?
And if we approve three B one and their consent?
Uh, so it's a second?
All second.
All in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, Kathleen, call a roll.
Uh, may I have the second or please?
Uh, that was me, David Wile.
Okay, my apologies. Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes three B one. Let's go back now to the consent calendar, three A one, and uh Craig, you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm really confused about this one. It's, it's, I've had some discussion with staff about it. They're talking about the house being just a rebuild plus ten. Um, but the drainage fixture units are going from forty-six to seventy-one, which seems radically larger. And we don't know if um the guest house is getting bigger and it's going to need a CDP. I mean, it just seems like this is a clear case of piecemealing here where we're not really sure what's coming next. And I, part of this is my confusion about what's going on that can maybe be clarified, but I think there's still an, an issue beyond that.
Richard, would you like to clarify or try to clarify?
Sure. Uh, the, the guest house, as stated on page one, the applicant is intending to pursue a guest house and a septic, septic system for that wastewater system. And that is not the subject before you this evening. That will be a coastal development permit for all of that development, as it was not there prior to the fire. Which we're looking at tonight is just the home, which is, uh, the home was a fire rebuild, if I'm correct, Jessica, correct?
That's correct.
And yes, they are increasing the number of bedrooms, uh, but when you look at the qualifications of what is a fire rebuild, bedroom count is one of them. It's, uh, there are three criteria and it's size cannot increase by ten percent, the size, the bulk, the height, massing. Then it's, it's cited on generally the same location as the structure that it replaces on the same general building pad. And the last of the three is that it's for the same use. So we're not going from a uh, single-family house to a multiple-family house or a commercial structure. So bedroom and bathroom count is something that building and safety uh does check, and this system has been sized for the increased plumbing fixture.
So maybe what I didn't
Addresses it, but.
Maybe what I didn't understand was that the fixture unit count goes way up. It's not ten percent, but you're suggesting that's a function of the additional bedrooms, maybe each have their own bathroom or something along those lines.
Yes, I believe it's, the house is going from a three-bedroom to a five-bedroom house, and that's what triggered the increase of fixture units.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Craig?
Um, yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm still a little bit uneasy about it, but I guess, I don't, John had his hand up there.
John, yeah, what, what would you like to say, John?
Well, uh, this afternoon, I watched the A and F meeting. And Richard was on it, and they brought up the question of serial development. And as I understand, there already is a, uh, a guest house on the property. Um, it was a ECDP, is that correct?
That's, it was an existing recreation room that they converted under an ECDP for temporary housing. So because the main structure was destroyed, um, instead of utilizing a trailer, they used the existing recreation room as temporary housing and converted it um to a secondary dwelling unit under ECDP. They've already submitted their follow-up CDP, which is currently being processed. And the septic system for that um secondary dwelling unit is being processed as well under that CDP, not as part of this de minimis waiver.
Okay, but my question really is you're going to, well, number one, th- this recreation room had a septic system and a bathroom?
Yes, that's correct.
And aren't we going into a situation where we have two CDPs at one time and isn't this serial development, which is what the the uh A and F committee asked the planning department to come back with a report on?
So we have a, a planning verification and a de minimis waiver. And then subsequent, and that puts back basically the home they lost. And then they are pursuing a coastal development permit to complete or follow up on that emergency permit uh that they used to get some form of temporary housing. Um, the A and F folks were concerned primarily, uh, my understanding was with the people who would uh come in for a, I'm just going to throw some random numbers out there, three thousand square foot fire rebuild and then subsequently follow up by adding another two thousand square feet to that home. And the concern was whether or not, uh, do we now, do we uh grant them some sort of fee waiver or all, waive all fees? It was a question of how is it that we're making sure the city recoups the monies, uh, that they're entitled in consistency with, I think it's ordinance, I want to say four fifty, uh, the one that established the fee waiver program. But these folks here are paying for the new development, uh, which is that, uh, second unit. There is no way you can leave on that. I don't need, I'm not a hundred percent certain of the status of the fees on the main residence. I would imagine we waived the planning verification because the house is not going to be put back beyond ten percent, which was the goal of what the council was looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is a received and filed unless there's a motion to be heard. Um, Trevor?
Unmute.
Trevor, unmute?
You muted, Trevor.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, since we pulled the item, if we could just do disclosures, I don't think there were any public speakers, but um, you know, we could put that on for the record.
Okay, uh, disclosure, Craig?
None.
Me, none. John?
None.
Dennis?
None.
David?
None.
Actually, I, I did, I did ask uh staff for the size of the, the house, and they provided the numbers to me.
Okay, just, just for, for what it's worth, I, I don't find this complicated. The, the de minimis waiver was something that was put in as a, a, an effort to avoid the necessity of otherwise having to go for a full CDP just because you wanted to re- restore or replace your, your septic system. If there's a structure that's connected to it, a house, a guest house, whatever it is, if it's within our jurisdiction, it will come before us. If it's not within our jurisdiction, as many things are not within our jurisdiction, it won't come before us. But it doesn't seem appropriate to me to hold up uh the, the septic system, the minimus waiver uh in an attempt to try to gain jurisdiction over something which would not otherwise be the case.
I move acceptance of the item as a consent.
It, it's consent item, so if hearing no emotion, we'll just pass on that. It, it's uh received and filed. Item uh two B, or B two, I'm sorry, Administrative Coastal Development Permit twenty dash oh one seven. This is uh an ACDP for the property at thirty-one oh twenty-six Rob Beach Road. And Craig, you pulled this one as well?
Yeah, I guess the leadoff question for staff is, is the wave uprush standard elevation different as between an OWTS versus a finished floor height of the residence? We, is there a specific level? Does that wave uprush level apply, the same number applied to a finished floor or an OWTS? Or can the OWTS be lower than a finished floor in terms of that number?
Yes, and the OWTS system uh can be lower. And the difference being is that it's allowed to be protected by some sort of obstruction from wave uprush.
In this case, the obstruction would be the intervening house.
Right.
Right, okay. Okay, because, and just to call it out, they, they used the uh NAVD nineteen eighty-eight standard and came up with a number that was thirteen point something feet. And I, I just called this out because I know the coastal commission's been pretty concerned about uh those elevations on some recent projects that were at higher elevations. But that, those were finished floors, so I think that, that's what would explain the difference in this case then. Uh, anything? Yeah, and also, there, there's some discussion about an area to be remodeled. Is that something that's coming to us in a later permit then?
It's, uh, and Philip can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's only an interior remodel, some walls in the kitchen or?
Correct. They are only um doing an interior remodel on the main house. And they, they wanted to add another uh bathroom.
So no need for a fifty percent analysis or anything on that? Okay, great, thank you.
No other comments that uh that will be received and filed as well. Item three, um, I'm sorry, D three. This is the Formula Retail Clearance for uh Malibu uh.
Trevor has his hand up, yeah, Trevor?
Yes, Trevor, you want to call?
Just if we could take disclosures, just because we pulled the item.
Okay, um, Craig, disclosures on uh three B two?
None.
None for me. John?
I talked to Richard this afternoon on various items about it.
Dennis?
None.
David?
None.
Um, yes. Jennings? Uh, I think three B three and three B four are pretty similar. Uh, so we can do them together if it matters.
Well, let's, let's see what the question is with regard to three B three, and then we'll, we'll see what we can do. That was your, that was uh Craig's matter as well, I believe.
Three? Yeah, well, both of them. I think they could, we could talk about them together mainly.
But, but why don't we do that then, instead of talking about whether we can talk about it? Let's talk about it.
Yeah, um, we got some, uh, I say we, I think John was concerned about this and also got some uh email from staff today. So just to clarify, the calculations weren't done on the individual shopping center, or they were done on the whole area, but they needed to be done on the individual. Um, I think they redid them, and I think it looks okay. I don't know, I haven't talked to John about it, so I don't know if he feels the same way. And, but one question I did have is um the Brandy Melville was operating without a permit, and I just wonder was there a penalty? And do we just like give them a retroactive permit with no consequences?
It was, it was my understanding that the code enforcement staff received a complaint that they were operating and went that same day and immediately shut down the operations. Um, I, I am not aware that there was a code enforcement fee or fine associated, but they have not been operating since code enforcement um, shut down their operation.
Yeah, yeah. John, maybe?
Uh, I, I should disclose, I'm the one that asked the staff if it had been cleared when I saw it.
Okay, is there, I, I take it there's not going to be any kind of emotion here?
No, I have a lot more to go on these, a lot more to go.
Okay, John, let's go.
Okay, number one on both of them, we do not have a staff report that has the correct calculations. Okay, we've got an email, we got this afternoon late, which nobody had any ability to uh process. The second point is, the calculations are incorrect and don't follow the city codes because when the Formula Retail was put in, it was determined that a shopping center had to have common areas and common walkways and common parking lots. This calcu- these calculations were done counting a shopping center, which is across civic centerway with no direct connection other than the city street. So therefore, and in fact, if you did the calculations properly, both of these, three B three and three B four would probably pass. But the whole system is wrong. I brought it up last time. Uh, we got a, a uh request, and it was sent back to the planning department to rework. And the store never opened, so they never came back. But it's very specific and it allows, for example, if Mr. Cos, who owns these three centers, bought Whole Foods, would Whole Foods be part of the center? It's across the street, same situation. Uh, I don't know. I was in every meeting on, on uh Formula Retail and spent thousands of hours on it, actually. And there's no question in my mind that the council uh took this into consideration and said, okay, you're going to have two shopping centers next to each other and share parking lots, et cetera, et cetera, and that equals one shopping center. But it doesn't equal three when one's across the street.
Okay, so John, let me stop you right there because I'm not sure where we can go with this. Uh, this, the Formula Retail ordinance is supposed to be a ministerial uh decision, and it, it doesn't, it's not really clear what it's supposed to be reported to us. Uh, but it's not really clear what we can do. So Trevor, what is, what is our option here? Is there, is there any option for the Planning Commission to take?
You're, you're muted, Trevor.
You're muted.
All right, if I remember correctly on this one, I, I, I think the plan, the Planning Commission can uh raise issues for the director to reconsider, but I don't think the, the commission actually has the ability to uh pull the item and make it a, like here before the planning commission, is that right, Richard? I can double check here.
That is correct, um.
Comment? Uh, last time, we got this situation, it was sent back to staff to rework it. Because there are errors, again, errors.
If the, uh, I know that the, that the ordinance does, um, the way it reads, I believe, is that the, the clearance will be granted unless the planning director decides to pull it or decides not to, to reissue it. But I think it's up to Richard at this point as to whether he wants to take it back and look at it again, but it's not up to us.
That's, that's correct. So i- if you have any more information you want to provide the planning director, if the planning director, after this meeting reconsideres, then it'll be, it will not be made final, and he'll instead bring back the Formula Retail uh, an amended Formula Retail Clearance.
I would like to point out that it was never codified, this ordinance. Uh, so that puts it, I don't know where that puts it. Uh, it's right in the city ordinance that it wasn't codified. Uh, so I don't know if any of what's in there is actually required. Um, it's a important thing because we have a city, we have a city center that's got I believe, five shopping centers in it, maybe six. Three of which were controlled according to this staff report as one. Uh, any of the others could become part of this.
Okay, John, I think you, I think you made your
Purpose of the uh thing.
I think you made your point. I think the, the issue is clear. Craig?
Just, there are a couple clerical things if you're taking it back, one being that on the Alfred Coffee, they checked the box that says they don't have more than ten. But in fact, looking at their website, they have fifteen stores worldwide. And on the uh, uh, Brandy Melville, um, they didn't circle any of the applicable standardized features of which, I, I mean, we, we don't need to get into the details probably, but there's probably two or three or four of those standardized features that would apply.
All right, Trevor, do you want disclosures on this one as well?
If you don't mind.
That's your three and four of the disclosures. Craig?
None.
None for me. John?
I talked to Richard this afternoon.
Dennis?
Since I've made.
Dennis?
None.
David?
None.
All right. Okay, so let's move on then to item four A. This is the appeal twenty dash one two, field of planning directors. I'm sorry.
Do we have to uh uh accept this?
It's a receive and file.
Okay, and are there appeals?
I'm sorry.
There are because all planning directors' decisions can be appealable.
Uh, that's what I just spoke with Trevor about and uh I I I'm, I don't know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it to Trevor to decide whether it's an appealable action or not, but um.
I don't believe it's among the the categories of items that's listed as appealable uh for a planning director's decision, but we can double check on that, but.
Yeah, it was never codified, so I don't know how it could be on that list.
I don't know what you mean by codified. It is in the code.
It says in the code, not codified.
I'm not sure that's And or it's a difference, but let's move on because it's not really getting us anywhere. Let's get to item four A. This is appeal number twenty dash oh one two. Uh, this is an appeal of the planning director's approval of planning commission clearance number twenty dash oh one seven to the Tesla Information Center and Showroom. May we have a uh staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. The item you have before you tonight is appeal number twenty zero one two, appealing planning clearance number twenty zero seventeen for the property located at two, three, four, oh, one Civic Center Way for the Tesla Information Center and Gallery Showcase that's located within the Whole Foods Shopping Center. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the vicinity map and aerial photograph. The subject property is located within a shopping center located on the corner of Civic Center Way and Cross Creek Road. Next slide, please. The project description includes a planning clearance for the Tesla Information Center and Gallery Showcase. The primary purpose of the store is to provide information and showcase Tesla products that are available for sale, including solar products, battery walls, vehicles, charging accessories, and apparel. The subject application is subject to Formula Retail, the Formula Retail Ordinance, and the Formula Retail Clearance was approved by the planning director and reported to the Planning Commission on the November sixteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed site plan. The site plan shows the location at the proposed one thousand and fifty-eight square foot tenant space, which is highlighted in dark gray to the right on the screen. Next slide, please. The main concerns of the appeal are the following. First, that the Tesla Information Center and Gallery is not a permitted use within the zoning designation and is not comparable with a miscellaneous service. The Civic Center Northeast specific plan governs permitted and conditionally permitted uses, among which include the miscellaneous service. Examples provided in the CCNSP of miscellaneous services include travel agencies, photo processing, mailing services, et cetera. Land uses are distinguished by the manner which in which they operate and their physical impact. Given the limited services provided by the Tesla Information Center and Gallery Showcase, it would fall under the category of a miscellaneous service. Additionally, the Tesla Store's primary purpose is to provide and showcase Tesla products that are available online for sale, including, as I mentioned earlier, solar products, battery walls, vehicles, charging stations, and apparel. The proposed use is comparable with a miscellaneous service and is therefore permitted within the CCNSP zoning designation. Secondly, the proposed use is analogous to a car dealership. The appellate contends that the Tesla Store is comparable to a car dealership in that the store is involved in the sale of vehicles, vehicle models are on display, and that the store offers test drives. So Tesla sells directly to consumers. Tesla explicitly does not sell vehicles through traditional car dealerships. Instead, all purchases of Tesla vehicles must be made and done online only. Part of Tesla's marketing strategy for all of its products includes storefront operations where people can ask and gain knowledge of this through employees, videos, and viewing the vehicle within the gallery. The onsite sales or deliveries of vehicles does not occur at the storefront and is prohibited. In addition, the CCNSP zoning district does not allow service or vehicle repairs or any auto dealerships within this zone. Automotive dealerships usually include maintenance facilities, body repairs, onsite inventory of automobile parts, um, and sales and inventories of new and used vehicles available for immediate purchase, not delivery. The Tesla Information Center and Gallery Showcase does not contain the above-mentioned characteristics and is therefore not considered an automotive dealership. And lastly, that there was not an official planning director decision. The appellate contends the planning director wrote a planning clearance memorandum and file explaining the rationale of the decision, but did not specifically render a decision for the project. The planning director approved planning clearance number twenty zero seventeen include, which is included in the staff report. The property owner signed the acceptance of conditions affidavit, accepting both the standard and specific conditions for the project. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends the adoption of resolution number twenty one zero four, approving planning clearance number twenty zero seventeen, denying appeal number twenty zero one two. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant team are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, can we get disclosures of ex party communications, please? Uh, Craig?
Yeah, um, I spoke with Marnie Randall, the representative on the phone. Um, she suggested that some of the parking could be done in the service alley on the west side, and she also conceded that overnight security hasn't been addressed. So I visited the site on Saturday, the twenty-third around three thirty PM. I learned a lot there. I found that the lot was full. I had to circle around three times to get a spot. Um, there were no open spaces in the service alley on the west side where cars theoretically would be parked. All but one of the Tesla charging stations were already in use by members of the public. Um, and this wasn't like a hot summer day or something. This was just a Saturday afternoon in 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 between lunch and dinner time, so it shouldn't have been too busy, but there all but one were full. Um, and in terms of the character of the shopping center, I observed that all the shops there basically serve domestic uses such as groceries, dry cleaners, nail salon, clothes, a few casual food spots, but that there's nothing there on a larger commodity scale, like durable goods, like appliances, furniture, or automobiles. Um, also, that same Saturday, an article appeared in the New York Times stating that other major automakers are all now making their version of a Tesla and are right behind in the marketing and sales approach using these retail shops, which may be relevant to the extent that other manufacturers may want to have dealerships in Malibu too. Uh, I also spoke to Pat Healy on the phone. I think she went over a lot of the issues, but um I don't think I learned anything beyond what's in the staff report on that. Thank you.
Okay. None for me, John?
I did speak to Pat Healy when I got her uh email. And I didn't learn anything that wasn't in the email. I did call Galpin Ford to see if they actually, you actually could buy a car online without ever going there, and they said, absolutely. Most people do it. Uh, other than that, I've relied on uh not talking to anybody else.
Dennis?
Uh, talked to Marnie uh after the last meeting, um, nothing really, just talked about what the building or what the business is supposed to be. That was it.
Okay, David?
Talked to Marnie when this was first on the uh agenda, then I talked to her again, uh, I think last week, I uh walked the site uh as well.
Okay, questions to staff? Before we open up the public hearing, Craig?
Yeah, I I missed how this is in any way different from a dealership. Can you reiterate why you say that? Because I mean, to me, every, every, every place sells things online too, and here you can take a test drive, so I'm I'm just missing what the difference would be.
Certainly. Oh, go ahead, Richard.
Sorry, Jessica. Um, I believe uh Pat Healy is in the audience and is the appellant. Trevor, shall we let her speak? Prior to us discussing?
No.
Uh, no, this is, this is questions to staff, and and again, the question is a little bit um along the line of debate, but uh but but we are just in questions to staff.
So the reason why I, we did not call this a car dealership, and Trevor, feel free to jump in as well, is that a car dealership has a certain service and items associated with it. When we looked at what makes up a car dealership and definitions, car dealerships, as was pointed out in the staff reports, they have uh service areas. They have a inventory of cars, new or used. Uh, there are things that go with and services you expect. You go to a dealership the expectation of actually getting some sort of service on your car, whether that be body work or mechanical. And and
Well, okay, you're you're right.
No, 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 we're not gonna get into it. No, no, we're not gonna get into a debate on this because it was basically the same information that came in the staff report and in the verbal staff report. Let's save that for, let's say, save that for debate after we've added opportunity to hear from the public. The further questions of staff. All right, let's open the public hearing. Uh, the applicant is who? Kathleen, who've we got?
The applicant team consists of Marnie Randall, Marshall Camp, Stephen Olshen, and Patrick Foran. And then we have the appellate, Pat Healy, and a member of the public, Howard Redsky, uh, as the public speakers today.
So, um, Trevor, applicant gets the fifteen minutes?
Well, yeah. The applicant, the applicant and the appellant both get fifteen minutes. We hear the applicant first, then the appellant. They both may reserve time for rebuttal, then the public, then the appellant, and then the the appellant, and then the uh applicant gets the finals.
Point of order? Yes, what's your question?
It, the appellant being the moving party in this case, don't they go first for that reason?
No, the Sorry, I didn't mean to
Go ahead, Trevor.
I was gonna say, the the practice in the city is that the applicant's uh speaks first to lay out the basis for the project.
Okay.
Last question?
Yes, John?
Uh, why is the applicant first or the appellant? You say the appellant's first?
The
The applicant, what?
The applicant's first, then the appellant, then the public.
Then why at the end of the meeting is the applicant second instead of first? And is there any basis for that?
That's the, that's the process that's been done in the city, and and then I think it also ties into the fact that it's the applicant who's who has their their project on the line here, and and they're given the uh the final rebuttal on the project.
Okay, so if you guys want to argue about this, I'm going to rule that the applicant will go first. You have a point of order, you can make it. If you can get three votes to overturn me, you can overturn me. If you'd like to make a motion to that degree, to that effect.
Yeah, I would, I would move that the appellant is the moving party, so they should, they're, they're the one who brought it. They are the one who should make their claim first.
Is the motion seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kathleen, would you, is anybody like to discuss it? If not, call the roll. Kathleen?
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Vice Chair Wile?
No.
Chair Jennings?
No.
Motion fails.
Yeah, applicant may be heard, fifteen minutes.
Marnie Randall, I believe we'll be starting.
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair Jennings and Commissioners. But I just went before the City Council on an appeal, by the way, and the appellant went first. And I had to rebut what the appellant had to say. So this is a little turned around for me, but uh we'll, we'll, we'll go with it. Can you hear me?
Marnie, yes, and of course, you realize that you can, of your fifteen minutes, you can reserve as much time as you want for rebuttal.
Yes, I do know that, but, but the appellant is actually the applicant here.
Okay, look, we we just had him, we just had a motion that failed, move on.
The best I can, thank you. I'd like to thank staff for their work in preparing the response to this appeal. I do think Jessica has addressed all the issues that were raised by the appellant thoroughly. I just want to reiterate that a specific plan cannot possibly list every conceivable approvable use. That's why it has a miscellaneous category of uses, as does the table of uses in the code. As staff said, these Tesla galleries are located in shopping centers all over California, such as Santa Monica Place, Century City, Tangapla- Topanga Plaza, and many others. And those shopping centers are not zoned for automobile dealerships either. And those Tesla stores also offer test drives by appointment. There's a clear difference between this type of store and an automobile dealership. Properties zoned for automobile dealerships are generally concentrated in specific areas due to the large footprints of those businesses, which generally include car lots, often repair facilities, as well as sales facilities. And they can take up entire city blocks of space per dealership. This is why Malibu does not allow automobile dealerships. They have huge footprints. The format of this pro-proposed showroom and gallery used by Tesla in all of their stores is intended to showcase their products and allow consumers to gather information and get answers to their questions in person to supplement what they can find online before they make decisions about a vehicle or a solar roof or a power wall system that they might want to purchase. Once they've made a decision, they can place an order with their personal specifications and a small deposit online from any internet-connected device anywhere in the world, including from a terminal inside the gallery. But they do not actually pay for the ordered items until they're delivered to them, much like buying a cruise or uh some other type of travel agency uh transaction. And Tesla products are delivered to either the purchaser's address or to specified delivery centers, never to the galleries. I think this information center will be of particular value in Malibu, where being insulated from the grid is exceptionally important due to the impacts of climate change. This store will offer, offer valuable help to people who are trying to make decisions about making real changes in their lives that will allow them to achieve energy inter-independence. We have two other speakers here tonight. They are Marshall Camp with Houston Henning, and Stephen Olshen, who is handling the submittals for most of the tenant improvement plans for the spaces at the park at Cross Creek. Marshall may make a brief presentation. Or we will just reserve a rebuttal. And Steve is here really to to answer questions, but other than that, we will reserve for rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Okay, you've got ten minutes and thirty-seven seconds left for rebuttal.
Oh.
Um, Pat?
She has fifteen.
Fifteen minutes, yeah, Kathleen.
I am raising the time now. It takes just a few moments.
Hello?
Hello, Pat?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you. I'm clear.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. A Tesla showroom is not allowed in the shopping center because Appendix One Table B of the local coaster plan clearly lists the permitted uses in the community, commercial, and visitor-serving zones. If a use is not listed or similar, it is not permitted. The Tesla showroom with its test drives is without a doubt a not allow, an unallowable automobile, automotive use under Table B, the automa- the automotive use category. So there are only two categories where similar uses are permitted in Table B, in the CC zone and the CV one zones. They are, they are the miscellaneous services and visitors-oriented goods, and the Tesla showroom with its test drives is not similar to either of them. Miscellaneous services include travel agencies, but photocopy services, uh, mailing services, appliance repairs, et cetera. These categories provide a valuable service to their customer. A Tesla showroom with with its test drives is not a service, and it's not and it's not similar to any of the services listed. Since Tesla automobiles are a product, they can't qualify under miscellaneous service category. Visitor-oriented goods are products such as recreational equipment, clothing, souvenirs, local arts and crafts, et cetera. And they are allowed in the CV1 zone. Tesla showroom again is not similar in any way to the visitor-oriented goods listed and hence is not allowed. The Malibu Municipal Code lists the same permitted products and services as in Table B and are referred to as, as governing this particular specific plan. Tesla showroom with its test drives again is not similar and is not allowed. As for what zoning applies, the city never applied for the required local coastal plan zone text amendment to change the zoning from community commercial to visitor-serving one. Therefore, the CC zone still applies. The LCP's current mapping indicates the project is not in the CV1 zone. If the CV1 zoning actually applies, staff needs to perform an analysis if they're considering allowing a Tesla showroom, since the showroom with test drives doesn't contribute to the required 50% visitor-serving allocation, which Table B Note 4 requires. It says, "The commercial use may be permitted only if at least 50% of the total floor area of the project is devoted to visitor-serving commercial uses." As far as dealerships, I sent you a memo listing all the similarities between Tesla and car dealerships. And in today's world, they operate in the same manner and have the same characteristics. Moreover, staff states, "Because car delivery takes place off-site like a travel agency, like a travel agency vacation and the intensity of use of the test drives is minimal, like a mailing service, it's a similar use." But Tesla is not at all similar to a travel agency or a mailing service. These businesses provide a true service to their customers. Tesla does not provide a service. And these rationalizations such as intensity of use, minimal impact and off-site pickup are not part of the LCP or municipal code and cannot be considered. Just because staff conditions a non-permitted use, it doesn't make this use an allowable use. I'll save the rest of my time for rebuttal, thank you.
Hey, Pat, you've got 10 minutes and 44 seconds. Trevor, Trevor, are we gonna go to the public now, members of the public? Or are we going to hear the rebuttal first and then go to the public?
Public next, the public next, back to the appellate.
All right, thank you very much. Who was the speaker from the public?
Howard Redsky.
Howard Redsky, all right, Howard. Three minutes.
Good evening, I won't take three minutes. I wanted to say, this just comes down to common sense. First, this is something that most citizens in Malibu believe in, roofs, solar batteries and electric cars. This is not a traditional car showroom in the sense of what the LCP and other documents think of a traditional car showroom. They think of a large place where they have service and they have many cars and you buy the car there, et cetera. This is a place where you mainly go to get information and you can test drive a vehicle, but they're also giving you information on batteries and roofs and other things. And I would think this is something that we would want and wholeheartedly believe in for a number of reasons. The environment is the biggest one. And also, this will bring non-tourist traffic. So all the shops in Malibu, restaurants, and because of the value of the cars, this will bring people with a higher income that can spend more money here. And after the Woolsey fire and the pandemic, this is something that our shops really need. So if you guys can use some common sense, I think that would be great. And also, keep in mind Elon Musk helps out a lot in places where he had his dealerships and participates. And he's a really good ally for the city to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. Okay, we're back to the applicant. Who would like to speak? You have 10 minutes and 37 seconds.
The appellate, is that what you said?
I said the applicant.
The applicant goes last, the appellate.
Oh, goes last, I'm sorry. You're just educating me, okay, Pat, you're up. Can you hear me, Pat? Are you muted?
Jeff, you, you, you had the appellate go first. And now the applicant.
We have the wrong person.
Wrong order.
No, wait.
We can rebut.
Turn off her mic.
Yeah, Kathleen is supposed to be Pat Healy, who's supposed to be unmuted.
Am I unmuted?
You are, Pat.
Well, how can I rebut if there's gonna be other speakers that come after, that represent the shopping center? I should be able to hear all of their points before I rebut. That's not fair. I heard one person say it's just something that he thinks residents would like.
Trevor?
That's, that's the process that's in place. You've heard the entire public speak as well as the applicant put forward the project itself.
You have anything you want to use your time, Pat?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what Trevor just said.
I just said that everyone's spoken except for the applicant who gets the final rebuttal. So everybody else has spoken this time, so now you have the right to use the rest.
They're, they're saving the time?
Yeah, that, all they have left is whatever they save after their initial presentation, then they get the final rebuttal.
There are no more public speakers.
Yep, there'll be nobody else except for their final rebuttal to basically what you're gonna say here.
Okay, well, I don't have very much to say because I don't have all the information of what people are saying. But if this is a use that Malibu wants, then they need to get this, the appropriate zone text amendment. Right now, what controls is Appendix 1B and Tesla does not meet those qualifications. I'd also like to probably say that based on the attorney's letter, the issues raised by the shopping center representatives are technicalities, they're not relevant. The appeal should be judged on its merits and their position has no substantial bearing on the matter before you. That is whether Tesla showroom is an allowable use in the CC and CV zones. That's the most important question. A dealership, I think, is debatable, I think it is a dealership, but that's not the relevant thing. The relevant thing is that it's not allowed under Appendix 1 Table B in the CC and C1 zones and under the municipal code. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Marty, you have 10 minutes and 37 seconds left.
Thank you. I want to point out that these codes and these portions of the LCP were written in ancient history as it relates to retail development. I mean, how people, how people sell their goods. One way, you know, this was way before the, the internet revolution. And I think that staff is completely correct and that there is no, this is not an automobile dealership. I know that Malibu did not want automobile dealerships because they didn't want car lots and they didn't want giant, you know, and they also didn't want repair facilities, which, you know, included at that time a lot of possibly very polluting chemicals coming out of automobile repair. And it was not a, a type of use that was appropriate for this community. This is not an automobile dealership in that mold. And I think we need to recognize that. So I would like to now ask Marshall Camp, who's on my list, to, on our list, to address you. So could you open his microphone, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners, my name is Marshall Camp. I'm an attorney for the Park at Cross Creek and thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. Just very briefly, because I think our position has been pretty well covered in the correspondence. The issue that's been repeatedly presented as the point of appeal, which is this body as an appellate body is limited to considering is whether or not the fact that quote automotive showroom with test drives is not an explicit verbatim listed permitted use in the code means that it is prohibited. And the answer is clearly not. Under the Malibu, excuse me, municipal code for the CV1 zone, it is expressly provided that in addition to permitted uses, uses that the planning director determines to be substantially or similar to, similar in nature to permitted uses are allowed. In this case, the use's determination is governed by the CC and specific plan that governs the city council approved at long last after many, many hearings, public hearings and determinations and findings proved the specific plan with specific land uses. And in that section, 2.2 of the specific plan, it likewise provides that any uses not listed are permitted if quote the planning director determines that the use is similar to other listed uses. This is very common, as the commission knows, not just in Malibu's code, but in land use regulatory schemes across the country. Because as Marty said, it is very difficult to anticipate future uses. 15 or 20 years ago, no one anticipated an electric automobile information showroom and gallery. And that is why these sorts of provisions exist. The planning director here consulting with the city attorney made the right determination that this use is similar to other permitted uses in its land use impacts. And as I believe it was Mr. Redsky said, carries a lot of benefits and potential benefits, not just to the people of Malibu, but to other local merchants in the Park at Cross Creek and elsewhere. The staff report is correct and we would urge the commission to reject the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from your side, Marty? Marty?
Hello?
Yes, do you have seven minutes and 39 seconds left? If you have anybody else you wish to have speak?
Hello, I'm sorry. I had a audio issue. No, there is, there is no one else on our side to speak.
Okay, so.
All the points we need to make, this is a, we are in a situation where we are moving into the future.
Okay.
Terms of, of uses of spaces. And I think it's going to change a great deal over the next several years in how commercial space use changes. But this is clearly not an automobile dealership. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Anybody else, Kathleen?
No, that isn't.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing now. We'll come back to the commission table for discussion and possibly a motion. Yes, Craig?
I do have a bunch of observations, but before I get to any of that, two questions for Trevor. The first one is, but definitionally, a dealer sells product. So I'd like to know, is there a legal definition in any relevant jurisdiction of what is required to call someplace a dealership? Is a repair shop a requirement to call it a dealership? Or the mere fact that they deal product, would that be sufficient to call it a dealership?
Well, I mean, I'm sure there's definitions, you know, in different jurisdictions of, you know, what a dealership is in many different ways. They're not binding on the city. So what the question here before the, the commission is, you know, what is the, the commission's interpretation of that term? You know, is it, you know, when this was created, you know, you know, there's evidence presented that this, that this type, exact type of automobile showroom didn't exist and so that would not have been what was targeted by it. But if the, if the commission determines that the important fact is, you know, the fact that someone's selling cars and not, you know, the other characteristics of what a dealership would be in that point in time, then, you know, that's, that's for the commission to, you know, determine it in its discretion here. And, and, you know, part of it is, I think there's two questions here. One is whether it's, it falls under the prohibition on dealerships. And then the question, the second one is whether this, this qualifies as under the miscellaneous services, as determined by the planning director. So there are two separate issues, but it's for the, the commission here to determine.
And it's, it's about, it's about parsing linguistically, what's the difference between a showroom and a dealer? But my, my other question for you, would, would Malibu collect sales tax on purchases made here? And if not, why not?
I, I believe the sales tax is based on where you live, even no matter where you buy, even if you, so if you're in Malibu and you buy your car in the valley, you'd still pay the sales tax based on where your residence is. But I mean, that's not really.
Well, if you go into a store, if you go into, into one of these shops right next door and want to buy a t-shirt, nobody's asking where you live for that, that it's, it's a retail tax. This would be a retail transaction presumably.
I, I'm pretty sure that sales tax on vehicles is, is, is based on where somebody actually lives. Isn't that correct, Richard? I think you guys actually did look into this.
Yes, this question was asked before. Sales tax goes to wherever the car is being registered to. So if you're registering the car to a Malibu address and you buy it online, that's where it's gonna go. If you register it to Colorado, it'll be Colorado.
But if I bought a t-shirt that said Tesla on it in the shop, that would be, that, those couple cents worth of tax would go to the city because I'm not registering my t-shirt in Colorado.
Right, the transaction takes place inside that storefront.
Okay, so we are, we would be looking at collecting some sales tax in the retail context.
For their other products, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll let others go and then I have some more observations.
Go on.
Trevor, my question is, why are we looking at the MMC here when the LIP governs uses? With the MMC, the city council may not change a use in the use table without going to the coastal commission, is that correct? You're muted.
Richard, Trevor, you're both muted.
So I'm, 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 my real question is, Trevor, who governs, the coastal commission or us? Do not we have to ask the coastal commission to change a zone? As ETA?
The, the, the issue here is that, is, is whether, if, if the commission just determines this is not an allowed use in the city, then yeah, you would need to go through in an LCP, you know, amendment process if you want to add new uses into the city.
So is it your contention that the planning director can call anything miscellaneous?
No.
Could he, could he call any other use miscellaneous?
No, the, the, the planning director is, is bound by the provisions of the code in terms of, you know, what would qualify to that. And that's, you know, you have, you have the, the plan directors has laid out a, you know, a number of reasons why they're saying that it would be an allowed use and that's their interpretation of the code where there's not something that's specifically listed. And that's just the process that, you know, the commission goes through. When you don't have something that is, you know, specifically unquestionably listed on the, the table of uses.
Okay, well, now let me ask you this. The table of uses specifically identifies uses for automobiles, specifically for automobile uses. None, none, none of the other part of the table counts. So how can you take a service use, call miscellaneous and approve an automotive use that is banned?
There is a specific definition of what is automobile service. And as proposed on the application from the applicant, they're not even stepping into the realm of things that fall into automobile service.
I'm not talking about automobile services. I'm talking about the table. I'm not talking about automobile services. I'm talking about the table allows three specific uses for automobiles. None of which are covered in this approval. None of them. So how can you, and I'm asking Trevor, this is, is if you got a legal document that said you can do all these things in an automobile, uh, an automotive, you can do these things. Automotive specified. And you don't do them, you use, you use another section. Why are they identified as automobile? And isn't that the intent of the table? If it didn't have an automobile use specified, we only allow these three things for automobiles. I can see using the other part of the table, but it says you can only have these three uses. And that was, that was accepted by the city council and when they adopted the LIP.
All right, are, are you looking at the the, the table in the appendix, uh, the table one of the LIP is what you're looking at?
I don't know what the number is, but they give a whole table of all uses and all zones.
Yes.
Into the LIP.
Yeah, and you know, what's, what, and with, under that, they have listed vehicle washing or detailing. This isn't that, um, service stations without convenience market. That's not this. And then towing and automobile storage. So these, it's just sort of a, a grouping of, you know, what these different uses are under the table.
No, no, it's not. It's saying these are the uses we won't let you do and as automobiles. It says automobiles. It doesn't apply to any other section of the table.
It says specifically, it, the header for that section is automotive related uses. This is related to automobiles.
Mm-hmm, but it, it doesn't say that these are the only, you know, that, that, that these are the only, you know, automotive uses that are, or any relations that could be related to automotive, automobiles that are, are dealt with in the code. This is just an organizational principle. You know, the actual use is what is listed on there. So.
Okay, let me ask you another question. Do you, you can see that there's a difference between a service and a product?
Sure.
They break the table down that way also. And Richard is using a service exception. Okay, not a product sales exception.
Mm-hmm.
You can say miscellaneous service, but this is selling products, not services. Is that correct?
It, it, it's a matter of, of, of your interpretation again, you know.
Cars in a product?
If, uh, you know, there, there is, I mean, like I said, with, with a, as the example has been made of a, you know, a, a travel, um, a travels, you know, a, a travel agency. You know, they do sell products and things, you know, but you don't get it there. The, the service is t, is showing you how to buy those things or advising you about what to do on that. And the interpretation here could be that that is, you know, that that's the services being provided here is assistance in understanding the products. And, you know, allowing you to be better educated in terms of your purchases here, you know? And yes, it sounds like there are sales of T-shirts done to that. It'd be ancillary to, you know, the, the central purpose. You know, of what they've put forward here on, you know, their vehicles, the power walls and the, and the solar. So, but it's, it's your interpretation, you know, it's.
Well, I'm having a hard time thinking that we can, we could, for example, decide that we wanted an oil refinery there. And that was a service because it provided people with gas and they could drive.
Okay, let me, I think, I think we understand your point, John. Let me see if there's somebody else. Let me see.
I want to continue.
Huh? Well, we'll come back to you. Let's see if there's any comments from anybody else. And I don't see a hand up, so I'll make a couple of comments because I want to change the point of view a little bit. The, during the earlier debates on this, an interesting point was made and that had to do with, um, standing. We have heard this on the merits and, and that's fine. That's as it should be, but there is a problem with the code. Uh, with the municipal code because it doesn't have a definition of what an aggrieved person is. There is a definition in the, um, LIP that it's somebody who tried to come and, and make a presentation in front of a hearing was not allowed to do so and so on and so on. But we don't really have a definition of aggrieved person in the municipal code and we probably, uh, should have that. Um, secondly, the, if you're making some recommendations to clean some things up, the whole process of what is appealable and what our role is in terms of these formula retail clearances could really use some massaging because it's, it's certainly not at all clear to me, uh, what we can do to overturn a formative retail clearance, or if we do, what standard we could possibly use in order to do it. So those are the two, the two technical points. As far as the, uh, as far as the substance is, substance is concerned, we can, I am, and I'm sure it's entirely possible that we could sit and debate, um, in a kind of a, a scholastic, medieval scholastic way. What's an automobile and what's a service and what's a product and, 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 and parse the language, uh, from now until the clock runs out. But to my mind, what I go back to is why do we have zoning rules? We have zoning rules because of impacts. And that's the only reason we have zoning rules. We have zoning rules because of impacts. And that's the justification for putting zoning into effect. So to my mind, I look at it and I say, what is the difference between the impact of a facility like this, call it what you will, and another facility, a, a law office, a, a, a travel agent, a bike store, a whatever. And until I can see some persuasive indicator that there's a strong difference in impact between this proposed use and, and other typically allowed proposed uses. I have to rely on the impacts. If there's no difference in the impacts, then I'm inclined to favor, uh, allowing it. So th- those are my comments. Anybody else? Craig, back to you.
Yeah, I, I could follow on that, but Dennis has had his hand up. Let's give him a shot at this.
Well, I was just, um, thank you. I, I, uh, I think Mr. Redsky said it pretty well for me. I, I feel that there's a lot of these vehicles in our city. And I think a lot of people will probably come by this, this, uh, this place of business and, and go inside and look around. I, uh, I just, I just hate to see us go after everybody that wants to try and come into town and start a business. We're, we're hurting, we're hurting from the fire, we're hurting from the pandemic. Somebody actually wants to come here and give it a go. Um, and, and something like this, I mean, they've got them, you know, in the Century City mall, as Marnie said, they that, this is not a car dealership. And i- as soon as you see car lips out front, then I guess we probably got, we got a problem and we'll have to address it. But that's not going to happen here. And we, we need to help this kind of thing along on all fronts. With, with these guys, the coffee shop up above that we just looked at, um, just about everything. We need everything in our city. So, um, I'm, I'm feeling that, uh, this is, this is a good thing and, and we should, uh, we should approve it.
John, you have your end up?
Well, I want to get back to what we are. We're a planning commission. We are under a LCP that restricts us to following that unless we ask them. And they approve it. Okay, that's the law. It's called the California Coastal Commission Law, or whatever it is. Okay, all zoning puts in specific uses. It doesn't say because we want to have it. It says because this is what a legislative body, the city and the coastal commission decided were permissible uses in those zones. It's like we don't have the ability to say, gee, this guy wants a sixty thousand square foot house. What's it bothering anybody? Let's let him do it. It's exactly the same argument. We cannot do that. Okay? And we are required specifically in the coastal act to amend our use table. We can't just say, oh, it'd be cool to have a, a video arcade. Now, this is a visitor serving zone, CV one, visitor serving. It's not a product selling zone. Visitors come to Malibu for various reasons, but it ain't to buy cars. Okay? And so, oh gee, let's have some more businesses here. It must be in the zoning code. And if we go into the situation where, oh, it's in, like Marnie says, the, the coastal commission didn't contemplate uh, virtual internet stuff thirty years ago, forty years ago. Of course they didn't. But there's a lot of things they didn't do, and that's why they have the amendment process. And when we go stick our finger in the eye of coastal commission and say, we can decide anything as miscellaneous in any zone. When they specifically have a whole bunch of uses for each zone. And they have decided what to do for that. You cannot invent a new zone. Now, Marnie said, you can walk in this building and buy a car by pushing a button. You don't have to go offsite. You can do it right onsite. Okay? Well, there are literally car dealerships have changed from forty years ago. They have dealerships you never go to. Uh, uh, hundreds of thousands of them. Car, used car dealers do not have a service department. Are they a dealer or aren't they? Is Carvana a dealer because it only has ons- uh, online buying? Is the local, remember the Ferrari dealership or whatever it was over in the freeway? All they had was a couple Ferraris. Didn't have a service dealer. They didn't have parts department. That is the new model, okay, of car dealers. It's not Tesla. Tesla may have started something, but you can go to the largest Ford dealer in the world and push a button in your house and the car will arrive a day later. Okay? That is the, that is, so you, you can't say, oh, there's showrooms and there's dealerships and they got lots and they, this and that. The, it's no longer required. So there's a service, there's a, a use that was not contemplated in the zone because they didn't exist at the time. That doesn't mean legally, legally I'm talking about, we can invent it. We can say, oh, here's a new, it's like, like when pots, when pop was popular forty years ago, they didn't zone it. Okay? Now I guess we zone it. Uh, now to give a planning director the ability to say something's miscellaneous when the table specifically says that's only for services. Not for goods. Okay? You can't call a liquor store miscellaneous. Okay? Uh, it's not a service. It's a service. Yeah, you go buy a bottle of booze. So the other thing that, that, why we must turn this thing and get a zone text amendment is because we never change the zone. And in that zone, on that table, it says P four. It doesn't say P. And, and the four means, and I can read it to you, the, this commercial use may be permitted only, only if at at least fifty percent of the total floor area of the project is devoted to visitor serving commercial use. Now, the coastal commission put that in because this was a visitor serving zone.
Okay, John, I, I kind of get the impression that you feel that this, that this appeal ought to be upheld. Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I just want to, before I make that motion, I want people to realize, and Trevor will not admit it, but we are under the coastal commission. We cannot violate a law. We're going to end up at the coastal commission. So I'm making a motion that, uh, the appeal, the appeal is upheld.
Okay, that's the motion. Is it motion seconded?
I have more comment.
Well, you can comment after you second it.
If they, I, I need to have a second on the motion before we discuss it.
I'll second it.
Okay, now further discussion on the motion. Craig?
Yeah, getting to your comment about impact, to me, the, the zone text amendment is what's needed. Uh, I mean, electric is good. I think we all agree to that. That's where we're heading. The problem in terms of the impact is that there's a slippery slope here and, and we get there because what staff has done is they've effectively tried to say it's a miscellaneous use because there, it's a limited quantity. It's, it's only a little bit of a dealership. But to me, the quantity doesn't effectuate a change in the type of establishment. The fact that they want three cars on the site um, is it's three cars more than what would be a retail shop. And those cars will be on the street making test drives. And so you're establishing a precedent here where you'd be saying, well, to the next guy who says, you know, GM has their car. They want to have their retail storefront establishment. And they'll say, well, you know, you let three cars go there and we've got this other place here with a parking lot across the street where we can park fifty cars. And you can't say no because you've already allowed this other use.
That's not true, but go ahead.
Well.
Why isn't it true?
I'm, I'm.
Because you, because it's these, you don't establish a precedent by, by saying because you have three cars, you have to allow fifty cars. That's, that's just, come on, you're better than that.
I hear that all the time. That guy got to build a house and you, you can't, you know.
My, my point is not my specific numbers or the specific example, but simply that you're opening the door. You can get your foot in the door then.
All right.
And, um, you know, I don't see the capacity available on the site. I, I had a hard time parking there. All, four of the five charges were already taken by the public there. Um, so it, you know, it just seems like, and, and in terms of the notion that, well, this is different because it's an internet purchase and it's not really in the store. All the big retailers, you can do anything online now. I mean, I ordered chi, I, instead of going to Home Depot the other day, I ordered chicken wire online and had that delivered to my house. So the fact that it's, it's an internet thing, that to me doesn't distinguish it from a dealership. It's just a, it's a small dealership. And that's opening the door. If we allow that as a miscellaneous use, then somebody with a little bit bigger of a dealership is going to say, hey, I'm miscellaneous use too.
Well, I, I agree with you that, that, that your point that you made first, uh, when you first started out about driving around and, and, and whether the parking lot that hold it on, that is an impact. And I agree that that's, that's a relevant consideration. Um, David, you have anything to say before we try to move to a vote?
No, I was actually going to call the question.
I want to make more comments.
But.
Okay, John, but really they have to be new comments. They can't be just retreads of.
Okay, um, this thing about what the impact is, and, and you can always say, well, gee, everything's different, but there are plenty of places in Malibu to put large dealerships under this interpretation. For example, and this isn't large, but, uh, you could ta, buy, take the Hertz lot, tear it, tear the building down. Put, I think they want to have forty-five cars in there and rent a small office in the building next door. Boom, you got a dealership. Uh, you could go and open up a, a Tesla, uh, say a GM thing in the, in the Whole Foods Shopping Center. Um, and then go rent Bell's lot and put five thousand cars on it. Okay? And get a, get a, uh, get a, a go-kart or a little cart, little thing to drive the people down there if they want to see one that's brown instead of white. Okay? Cars nowadays are sold differently. And we are inventing, we are allowing a use that has not been defined. We are listening to people who say, this is the only people that do this when thousands of dealers do this, uh, and thousands of products do this. And Marnie admitted, you can walk in the store and they'll help you push the button and you bought it. You didn't buy it from home. You bought it from their computer. That's no different than walking into any dealership. Now, but the most important thing is there is a requirement in the LCP that says you have to do a study, which they have not done. They, it says this is a CV zone. You got to prove you're using CV uses. They have not done it, period. And it's required. So we are violating the LIP if we vote this because we have not done it.
Okay. Anything further? Just Craig?
Just to follow on that comment, this does seem to be enough of a violation that the coastal commission might get wound up and might want to look at this. So that's, that's hanging out in the back, background.
Okay. Kathleen, uh, any further comments? We call the question now. Let's, uh, Kathleen, would you call the vote, please?
So we had, um, a motion by Commissioner Mazza to, um.
A motion to uphold the appeal.
Okay.
Uphold the appeal seconded by Commissioner Hill.
Great. Uh, Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Vice Chair Wile?
No.
Chair Jennings?
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we now, uh, uphold the staff recommendation to deny the appeal.
Um, yeah, I'm just, hold on just a second. I'm trying to figure out what the appropriate recommendation is. Adopt planning commission determining that the project is exempt, blah, 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 and approving the planning mission. Yes, okay. Basically, it's the staff recommendation. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to your motion?
I second.
Move it seconded. Further discussion?
John, I just want, you know, we are, I just want everybody before they vote to realize that this is more than likely going to cause a violation of our LCP. It is not a trivial question with the Coastal Commission to say the planning director can approve anything miscellaneous, okay? That's just not the way it's done. And you're going to get this city in worse position than they already are.
Okay, call the roll, please, Kathleen.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Chair Jennings?
Yes. Motion carries, motion carry three to two. That concludes item four A. We're now on to item four B. This is coastal development permit. Would you like, anybody like a break or should we do another one before we take a break? I can't see anybody but Dennis. Yes.
I, I, I understand that I, I have to recuse myself from this.
Okay, you do? You want to give a, well, before we do that, are we going to take a, should we wait for a break or take it now?
What is the next one?
A quick break would be good, a quick one.
A quick one, five-minute break before, this is four B, the, the Zumeres Drive property, John.
Okay.
All right, then we'll come back. You're going to have to state your reasons while you're going to have to recuse, recuse Dennis. And, uh...
Very good.
Uh, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll come back at eight, at seventeen minutes after eight.
Jeff?
Yes.
What is it? Do you tell us now and then he can get a longer break?
Uh, I, because I want, Trevor, is, is this something you've discussed with Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, fine. You want to give us your, your reasons now then, Dennis?
Um, what I understand is I spoke on this last year as a person in the audience. I spoke on this, this particular project, so...
Okay.
Um, now that I'm on the commission, I, I guess I can't say anything.
Okay, fine. Then you have to mute yourself or turn off your video and all that stuff.
It, it counts, count, if Commissioner Smith could then disconnect from Zoom and we will contact him when this item is, is complete. If everyone else could mute themselves and turn off their video until eight seventeen when we're back here.
Okay, thank you. Greg, John, we need Trevor, we need Richard. Trevor got Richard. Okay, you ready to go? Kathleen, are you there?
I, I, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm here.
What was the disqualification of Dennis? That he spoke in favor or against this project? I didn't hear what it was.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, he said that he spoke in favor of this when it was up in, before us, whenever it was. Um, and so he's, uh, has to recuse himself.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we are reconvening the regular meeting, Monday, February first. We are on item five, or four B, excuse me. Uh, this is the coastal development permit seventeen dash oh oh one, a variance nineteen dash oh oh four, and a site plan review seventeen oh oh five. It's for construction of a new single-family residence. And it's at five nine two four Zumeres Drive. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The next item on the agenda is coastal development permit number seventeen dash zero zero one, including variance request number nineteen dash zero zero four and site plan review number seventeen dash zero zero five for a project located at fifty-nine twenty-four Zumeres Drive. Next slide, please. The property is located on the eastern side of Zumeres Drive in the rural residential five-acre zoning district and is approximately two-point-five acres in size. Next slide, please. The proposed copper work includes a new six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven square foot, two-story single-family residence with the following improvements. A one thousand six hundred and forty-seven square foot subterranean garage, a rooftop deck with herb garden not to exceed twenty-four feet in height as measured to the top of the guardrail, rooftop elevator shaft not to exceed twenty-eight feet in height with a pitch roof, swimming pool and spa, decks, landscaping, hardscape, fire department turnaround and driveway improvements, retaining walls and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The project also consists of variance number nineteen dash zero zero four for construction on slopes deeper than two-point-five to one and site plan review number seventeen dash zero zero five for construction up to twenty-four feet in height for a flat roof with a rooftop deck and twenty-eight feet for a pitch rooftop elevator shaft. Next slide, please. As mentioned before, a variance is requested for construction of a driveway on the fused livers of steep slopes identified in the blue hatching in this exhibit. The driveway takes advantage of the existing dirt driveway but must be widened to comply with fire department requirements and therefore this variance cannot be avoided. Next slide, please. On March second, twenty twenty, the planning commission held a duly noticed public hearing on the subject application and continued the item to a date uncertain at the request of the applicant to allot time to consider redesigning the project and address concerns discussed during the public hearing. Concerns included the size of the proposed structure and the possible negative impacts, i.e. lighting and sound that may arise from the proposed rooftop deck on the surrounding properties. Here we have the previously proposed total development square footage, which was seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine square feet. And we, below it, we have the new proposed total development square footage at six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven square feet. In September twenty twenty, the applicant submitted revised architectural plans with these changes. Staff held remote meetings with the interested party, Ms. Torren Chalk on September eighth, twenty-first, and October ninth, twenty twenty, to discuss the proposed project revisions. At the time, Ms. Turnchaw continued to express concerns with the rooftop deck and elevator leading to the rooftop deck. Staff communicated the concerns with the applicant. Staff held one final remote meeting with Ms. Turnchaw on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. No additional concerns were made at that point. Additional correspondence was received earlier today and was distributed to the commission for their consideration as well as to the applicant. The applicant submitted revised architectural plans proposed in the one thousand sixty-two square foot reduction in the project's TDSF from the previously proposed seventy-seven fifty-nine square feet to sixty-six ninety-seven square feet. Next slide, please. The project still includes a rooftop deck. However, the applicant has modified the rooftop deck to contain a nerve garden, which the city biologist has reviewed and approved. Next slide, please. Here we have the site plan. Next slide, please. Here, just pointed out that the driveway in the lighter green color and then the circle in purple is the turnaround area. In green to the right of that, we have the subterranean garage access. And the darker teal towards the center of the slide, we have the proposed single-family residence, fire department walkway access towards the top. And we have the proper location of the proposed swimming pool and spa and the location of the pool equipment. Next slide, please. Here we have the screenshot of the plan sheet for the subterranean garage, which can accommodate up to three enclosed parking spaces. Next slide, please. Here we have the first floor plan, which is four thousand one hundred and one square feet. Next slide, please. And I wanted to clarify that there was a bit of confusion with the applicant's project plans. They have duplicated sheet A two-point-three. And I've went ahead and included both here in a brief explanation. So page twelve of the plan sheet has the second floor plan, which is excluding the area open to below. That area is, where the square footage here is two thousand two hundred and seventy-two square feet. Next slide, please. This again is labeled as A two-point-three, which is page thirteen of the plan sheet. Here, he, the applicant is including the square footage, including the area to below, which is two thousand seven hundred and five square feet. So that, that's needed to make our calculations for two-thirds rule. Next slide, please. And here we have story pole photographs. Story poles were installed in March twenty nineteen. Staff visited the project site in twenty nineteen and photo-documented the story poles. And staff revisited the site on October nineteenth, twenty twenty to confirm story poles were still in place. Next slide, please. The applicant is available to address the concerns made in the correspondence, which was received today and has stated that they are amenable to strengthen any lighting conditions if needed. Furthermore, the correspondence includes a reference to illegal grading done on the property. However, the staff report states that the California Coastal Commission permitted the after-the-fact grading in construction of retaining walls and approved an amendment to include installation of drainage devices to assist in slope stability in the nineteen nineties. Um, the project is not visible from any scenic area, scenic road, or public viewing area. The map trail that runs along Zumeres Drive is undeveloped and has not been constructed, as well as the other trails named in the correspondence. The project's rooftop deck is consistent with the non-beachfront development and design standards. The project's rooftop deck is consistent with the non-beachfront development and design standards. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number twenty one dash twelve, approving the proposed project as condition. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Didier. Disclosures, please, Craig. You're muted, Craig.
Yep.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, fair few here. I spoke with Rick Mullen. He's a neighbor there. His wife actually, the family grew up there and the road is named after the family. He underscored that for purposes of the neighborhood character, noise, light, environmental effects, this has more canyon where the average house is about three thousand square feet, which is less than half. He asserted that the nearest eight properties in Ramirez averaged thirty seven percent of the size of this. I spoke with Chris Marks and Beatrix Zalinski, who are also Ramirez residents. The, they both also emphasized the Ramirez Nexus, pointing out that it's one of the most rural rustic neighborhoods left in Malibu. They were particularly concerned about noise and light from the rooftop deck and pointed out that the height of the house elevates the noise and light impacts, allowing them to project further. And there's a reason that lighthouses are built on towers. I met with the applicant onsite, got lay of the land, got the sense that the view impacts as distinguished from the noise and light pollution impacts did not seem severe. I was treated to the sight of two red-tailed hawks circling, tending to confirm that whatever effects are anticipated, habitat loss will be among them. I noticed copious coastal sage scrub all around, including protected yucca. I checked the city GIS map and found that much of the parcels to the north and east are mapped Esha with that same biome extending right up to the buildable lot in places. So there's lots of de facto Esha within the two hundred-foot fuel mod zone. And I have some questions for staff, but I guess that's the next step. Thanks.
I talked to Rick Mullen today, not anywhere near the detail Craig did, gave me. Basically reminiscing about the city. And I talked to Richard this afternoon. I talked to Don Schmitt and learned nothing. I talked to, that isn't in the staff report. I talked to Don Schmitt's Saturday. Trying to talk me into running through the muck. Learned nothing that wasn't in the staff report.
David.
I visited the site with the owner the first time this was on the agenda a couple of months ago. I don't even remember when that was now. And subsequently talked with Don Schmitt when he came onboard the project. I think I talked to him maybe last week. Nothing beyond what's in the staff report.
Yes, for my own part, I met with Don Schmitt's on Saturday and, and with the applicant on Saturdays. But basically discussed the materials on the staff report, went over that. Of course, I was present during the previous hearing on the project. And I lived for ten years in the seventies, basically across the street, across Ramirez Canyon from this property for about ten years. That's it. And yes, Trevor.
Commissioner Hill, I, I believe you told me that you reviewed the record on this from the, the previous hearing since you were not in attendance at them?
Oh, yeah. Did I not mention that? I did, I did review the record. I looked at the video and what did I learn from that?
You don't need to disclose because that's, you know, already in.
It's on the record, right? Okay.
Okay. So questions of staff? Yes, John?
I just a couple of simple ones. Didier, can you explain what the difference on the second, I guess it's the first floor where it's open to below, how that affected the two-thirds rule? Because you showed us two versions of it.
Yes. So when we calculate the two-thirds rule, we need to include the areas above eighteen feet in height. So that volume, we needed to be included in the two-thirds calculation. And that's why they have those two separate exhibits. So page twelve of the plan sheet only includes the square footage without that open area, which was the two thousand, let me go back to the PowerPoint. Was, was two thousand two hundred and seventy-two square feet. And when they included that area open to below for the two-thirds calculation, it was two thousand seven hundred and five square feet.
And so just because it was eighteen feet, it counted the second, the second floor and that made it okay for two-thirds?
Yes.
Even though it wasn't counted for. Okay, now, next question. You say the roof deck is twenty-four feet. And the elevator shaft is twenty-eight feet. How do you get out of a four-foot door?
It's on the backside.
Yes, and I'll, and I'll let the applicant speak on the project, on the project plans themselves. But yes, the, yes.
So, so there is an area on the roof that isn't twenty-four feet high?
Yes, that's correct. In the sections of the, of the plan sheets, you can tell that the rooftop, the roof elevator is a few feet lower than the top of the rooftop deck.
Okay, and then when the coastal commission gave them the after-the-fact rating permit, did you review that and see if they, usually back then they used to put in restrictions that you had to come back to them to change things? Did you review that to see if there were any restrictions on amendments to their CDP?
So this project I inherited from a previous case planner who did the research. I did, however, follow up on that and I did not find any instructions of that, of that like. Because I've seen that before.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Craig?
Yeah, I've got a fair few. I, I asked to see the original grading permit. I didn't find it on base. I have not received it. I think it might be relevant with respect to the biological assessment because at the time the fuel modification rule was a hundred feet, not two hundred. Also, we'd be looking at variances for construction on slopes, more Esha impacts, possibly a reduced TDSF limit insofar as it one-to-one slopes may have been there and subtracted. I'm, I'm not comfortable going ahead without seeing that original permit because so much of this site is predicated on that. I, I, I don't know. I, I would move for a continuance, but I know we need to get things done and I don't think I'd get the votes anyway. So question for staff. Well, will we ever see that grading permit? But that's sort of rhetorical at this point, I guess. Next question. The fire department walk-around requires a minimum of five feet width. But, and so the applicant has hung these sort of fire stairways around on the north side, up slope side of the property. But the LIP three point five point three B five says that open unenclosed fire escapes and fireproof outside stairways may project into any required yard, a maximum of four feet. So either those walkways are not wide enough for the fire department walk-around, or they're too wide for that LIP rule. And so my question would be is how is that reconciled?
So that question, I'm going to defer to the project applicant, so they can speak on this project plans. All I can say is that the project was approved by the fire department as proposed.
Okay, so it may be that we're violating the LIP, but we'll get back to that. The, the neighbors rep in the communication, Ava or Eva, said something about the rooftop deck having been initially removed after a hearing and yet it's again part of the project. What was that ever removed from consideration previously?
So there was various iterations of the plans. That's why in my presentation and in the report, I stated that I had the remote meetings with her. I think we had like three or four. So project applicant considered removing it, went back with it. There were just iterations. So on September twenty ninth is when I received the final plans, which are before you tonight, which included the rooftop deck. And we we made the applicant aware of the, you know, the commission's desire to remove the rooftop deck, but he wanted to continue with it as proposed.
So it has not ever been removed?
Not entirely.
Okay. Sort of similarly, I guess. Adrian on the video of the last hearing mentioned that there was a required variance for the driveway width, but that is not the case in this current version of the application. I wondered, did he misspeak then or what? Is there an issue there?
So the variance is still required for that, the width. I know that Adrian also inherited the project from a previous case planner and it was kind of last minute, but I reconciled, I listened to that meeting and I made sure that I went through the project plans.
And then the, some neighbors recently had worked at their place and they are within five hundred feet of a mapped fault and they believe this site is too. And they asked the question, has a fault rupture evaluation been completed for this?
So for that, that question, I would have to defer to our geologist who was not in the meeting tonight. The project has been approved by its geology department.
Okay, well, I, I have plenty of other thoughts, but I'll, I'll leave that for the staff questions. Thank you.
John?
Just real quick, I forgot to ask about the roof deck. There's planters up there. How big is the deck in total and how big are the planters?
I think that I would defer that question to the project applicant so they can better speak on the rooftop deck. I think they're ready to answer those questions.
Is there anything in the resolution that requires them to maintain those, those planters or could they just rip them out and have a bigger deck?
No, the only conditions that we have in the resolution are just conditions regarding the height, making sure that the growth would stay be below twenty-four feet in height, but there is no condition regarding them to maintain the, the planters there.
David? David?
Yes, question for, I, I guess, Richard or Trevor on the rooftop deck as an element of neighborhood character. I'm unclear how you evaluate. It's one thing to say this has two stories and other houses in the neighborhood have two stories. So that aspect, having a second story doesn't necessarily violate the neighborhood character. But if the second story includes a rooftop deck hypothetically, and there aren't other rooftop decks anywhere in the neighborhood, does that constitute a separate analysis as to whether or not that violates neighborhood character? You understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I do. I was waiting to see if, Richard, you want to speak first or if you want to meet us to jump in?
You can go first and I'll speak. How's that sound?
Sure. Yeah, well, as you know, neighborhood character is not specifically defined in the code. And so you're looking at the character of the neighborhood. And so as you're looking at this, you know, just because there isn't another rooftop deck doesn't mean that it would be in contrast with neighborhood character necessarily. But there could be characteristics of that, of that deck that, you know, could adversely affect the character of that neighborhood. If it's generating noise or light or other types of, of issues in there, you know, it's to you to evaluate for yourself about how this fits in there and whether you think having this rooftop deck would adversely affect the, the character of the neighborhood.
Well, I think issues like noise and lights, you're not going to know until after the fact. So I, I'm just wondering whether the fact itself of there being a rooftop deck is a separate element in the consideration of whether it's consistent with neighborhood character. When you make that determination, is that a separate element or not? If it's just two stories, it's two stories.
I, I, when you say separate element, I think you're trying to say just because it would be the only one that would have a rooftop deck, would that would that somehow violate neighborhood character just by that existence? And not necessarily, you know, you, you're looking at the, at the impact of having that. You know, it's because a, a project has a different feature that's, you know, above eighteen feet, doesn't mean it's necessarily going to negatively affect neighborhood character, even if all the other homes in the area are only a single story. It could be determined, you know, that it's not going to negatively affect neighborhood character. It's, you know, it, it's for you to decide about, you know, what the neighborhood looks like, you know, how this would affect it. But just out of hand, just because it has it alone, I would say that would not require you to find that it would adversely affect neighborhood character.
One more question, different subject, the fire hydrant. I forget which neighbor's letter suggested that, and I don't remember from the conditions that I read earlier in the, in the resolution adopting it. Neighbor said, can we make it a condition of the permit that the fire hydrant be built? Is that in the resolution as a condition? The fire hydrant that would be of value to the neighbors as well. I know it was something that the applicant said they intended to do, but I don't know whether it's made a requirement.
I'm, I'm looking through the resolution now because I don't recall if it's specifically a condition, but I, in the resolution, but speaking with the applicant, he informed me that that's a requirement of the fire department and, you know, that's gonna be beneficial to the project and it's a requirement of the fire department to, to install that fire hydrant.
Okay, so let's get to the public hearing and, and maybe a lot of these questions could be answered for you by the applicant or the, the public themselves. So Kathleen?
We have the applicant, Don Schmitt's, and three members of the public, Rick Mullen, Norman Haney, and Mindy Pananzio.
All right, so the applicant has fifteen minutes, Tom. Did you unmute Mr. Schmitt's?
Alex.
Speaking very eloquently there. Thanks for muting me. Chair Jennings, point of order before we start the clock and I'll run my stopwatch here because my PowerPoint will cover it. I'd like to retain four minutes for rebuttal. So Kathleen, if I don't catch it, holler at me if I, if I get to the eleven minutes. Could you?
Will do.
And if we could please pull up the PowerPoint presentation. Again, Don Schmitt's on behalf of the applicant. I want to thank you commissioners and your staff, next slide, please, for your time pertaining to this application. This is a parcel located off of Zumeres Drive. You can see the surrounding area. Next slide, please. The aerial view of the subject property, we're going to lay out the development and regulatory constraints here. Next slide, please. So you can see as tabulated, next slide, you've got the front yard setback, which is a maximum sixty-five foot. Next slide. Then you have the rear yard setback of fifty foot. Next slide, please. And then the side yards combined total, which lay out the box in the area. And by the way, to Mr. Hill's query, you will note that the fire department access weight does not intrude into the setback. So the citation that you gave in regards to the code thankfully is not applicable. Next slide, please. So our next door neighbor that you drive past has a thirty-six foot front yard setback. Next slide. Then of course there's the two and a half to one constraint that we have, which leaves us the readily identifiable logical building site. Next slide, please. We are six hundred and ninety-two feet away from the street. We have a sixty-foot elevation differential. You simply will not see this house from the street. Next slide. And the setbacks that we have here, combined with our neighbors who have been objecting to the project, we have some ninety-seven feet we're set away. Next slide, please. There has been a complete biological assessment. Next slide, it's been reviewed by the city biologist. No, this project will not impact Esha. Next slide, please. We redesigned the project to make sure that we had, next slide, please, that we pulled the house back so that it was a full two hundred foot away from the mapped Esha. Next slide, please. Point out that the identification of a isolated patch of coastal sage scrub or yucca does not constitute Esha under our local coastal program or the coastal act. And you can see that in actuality, there's a tremendous amount of fuel modification from the surrounding development in the area. This project is not impacting Esha. It has been approved by the city biologist. Next slide, please. And those findings are in the staff report on page eleven of twenty, that this is not a Nisha project. Next slide, please. There was a coastal development permit. There's been assertions from opponents that the development, the grading out there is a violation. It is not. There was a violation action. It was reviewed and approved by the California Coastal Commission with proper grading permits before the city of Malibu existed. And this is a copy of the coastal development permit. Next slide, please. There was a very bona fide query made to me in regards to whether or not the grading was done properly. This is the field engineer's daily report inspection of the compacted fill. And you can see over there in the far right-hand column that all the fill was compacted and benched in to ninety-five percent compaction. And there was additional testing that was done pursuant to this application and that has been reconfirmed. It is a properly engineered, properly compacted building site and the pad is the existing legal site. Next slide, please. So we are asking for a variance for the, for the turnaround. There is a retaining wall that will begin into the slope deeper than two and a half to one. This is This is a required turnaround. This is a fairly long driveway and it is absolutely a prerequisite for us to build any sort of house here whatsoever. Next slide, please. You can see that the retaining walls do comply with the maximum height. We have one wall six foot tall with 18 inch separation. And then we've got like a three foot wall that's, that's back behind that. So there's no variance for the wall height, just for the development on the slope, see for the two and a half to one, so that we can have the hammerhead turnaround. Next slide, please. Uh, the fire hydrant location, there was a question in regards to whether or not that was, uh, something that was in the resolution or a condition. It's a requirement by the fire department uh, that for them to sign off on this, because the house was located a protracted distance from the hydrants located at Ramares. We have to bring that hydrant down there. You saw that in the objection letter from the neighbor ironically also was asking for us to maintain a favor for them that we would have an access gate for the fire department when they come down on our driveway to connect to this hydrant so that they could pull a hose down to our neighbors', uh, neighbors', uh, building site to their house. We're of course amenable to having the gate in the fence, um, and, and it's just the right thing to do. It's not a code requirement, but of course we're doing that. Next slide, please. And by the way, that, uh, that hydrant will be produced to 1,250 gallons per minute at over 20 PSI. So, uh, we cited it, the development site in the flattest existing graded, uh, uh, spot on the property in the middle of the property. Uh, but we do need the variance for the turnaround for the fire department. Next slide, please. So, uh, the two thirds ratio, uh, we did use the larger numbers as DDA was, uh, was referencing here. The total development square footage has been shrunk down significantly from what was in front of you today. We do concisely meet the two thirds ratio. Next slide, please. The maximum allowed, uh, second story would be 2,734 square foot. Incorporating the area, the, I think you misspoke, uh, for the open tube below is 2,705 square foot. Uh, we are in fact underneath, uh, the maximum two, uh, second story on the two thirds ratio. Next slide, please. So this is, this is the elevation, just to give you a feel for the way that the house looks on the site, uh, uh, for the CAD. Next slide, please. So there was concerns over the size of the structure and the March hearing and potential negative impacts from the deck. Uh, and, and so we did go back to the drawing board and do a redesign. Next slide, please. The maximum TDSF for this property is 8,940 square foot. Previously, what was in front of the planning commission was 7,759 square foot. We shrunk it down to 6,690 square, 97 square foot of TDSF. Next slide, please. So that's not only a reduction of 1,000 square foot, it's several thousand square foot under the maximum TDSF, which is allowed under the code. Next slide. The building site, any of you that have been out there, you know that it's notched in, it's hidden, uh, it, it really has very low as, as Commissioner Hill, uh, uh, referenced from his side visit, you really, it does not have significant visual impacts. And by the way, the objection letter about it being visible from a trail is erroneous. Uh, the coastal slope trail is not in existence. And of course, the Murphy trails on the other side of the ridge line, whoever asserted that uh, simply did not understand the geography of the area and Ramirez Canyon is a private street. Next slide, please. So, uh, the slope descends 40 feet down to our neighbors at 5967 Ramirez. Next slide. And there's dense vegetation, although they have been in the process of cutting down some of those trees. Next slide. There's not going to be significant visual impacts, but there was a concern from the neighbor about lights. And so, uh, the staff has put a condition for consistency with the dark sky ordinance, which we're in complete agreement with, but we want to, we want to, uh, tune that up a little bit more that all the lighting will be specifically shielded so that the neighbors down below us will not be looking up past any sort of shielding where they will see uh, the actual illumination device itself. Okay. So that's, we want to, uh, we want to strengthen that condition slightly to try and assuage our neighbors' concerns. Next slide. So the, the point is when you look at this property from Zumeras, you literally cannot see this house whatsoever. Next slide. When you are down on the building site and you look directly across Ramirez Canyon and you see a whole slew of two-story homes, you see a whole slew of homes up on Murphy Way, all two stories. Now these are not the neighborhood, but this is what you see from the building site and what we'll see this building site. Next slide, please. And this is reflected in the staff report that there is a mixture and mostly two-story homes in the area. Next slide. Now staff put the traditional 500 foot radius map on the staff report. Next slide, please. But we don't believe that this is an accurate representation of the city's code, such as 1740040 specifies that when you define a neighborhood, there should be no intervening major natural or man-made physical features such as roads or flood control channel, channels or canyons that, uh, separate and identify neighborhood. Next slide, please. So to the west of us, we've got the large drainage. Uh, so anything on the other side of that drainage should not be included. Next slide, please. And of course, everything in Ramirez Canyon is a complete and different separate entranceway. It should not be included in the neighborhood analysis. Next slide, please. And I'm running out of time, so I'm going to have to go fast. Next slide. So moving quickly, you've got, uh, Zumeras Drive, you've got a two-story house, uh, with a 4,907 square foot second story. Next slide. Uh, just move quickly on this, please. Next slide, please. All these were, uh, pursuant to building permit review. A 3,702 square foot second story on Zumeras Drive. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Uh, second story here, 6,180 square foot. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Uh, the second story here on Zumeras, 4,477 square foot. Next slide, please. And again, all these are on building permits. I'm going to move this along to get to the punchline here. Next slide. And, uh, you would note that this house here, by the way, has a rooftop deck on it and there's never been any police complaints. We checked. There's several, uh, roof decks in the area, nor is that a neighborhood character analysis in the code having a deck whatsoever. Next slide. The next slide, please. Just keep rolling these slides forward until we get to, uh, the, uh, uh, the conclusion on this, because I have to wrap this up and retain some time for rebuttal. Next slide and stop here, uh, for a second. As you can see, 90% of the houses along Zumeras are two-story homes. The average TDSF is 8,347 square feet. Next slide, please. Next slide. And next slide. So in conclusion, and I'll retain the remainder of my time for rebuttal, nine out of 10 of the residences along Zumeras, which is the neighborhood as defined by the city code and the LCP, nine out of 10 are two stories. Next slide. And the neighborhood average for those second stories is 3,770 square foot. And we're proposing a 2,705 square foot second story. So with that, I think I will go ahead and retain the remainder of my time for rebuttal. And, uh, there was a lot of questions asked. I'm available to answer those as well.
Okay, Don, you've got four minutes and four seconds left, but hit it just right. Must have practiced that in front of a mirror. Okay, who's next, Kathleen?
Next we have Rick Mullen.
Rick?
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, gents, for your service. Um, it started off by saying, I think there's really no compelling reason to exceed the 18 foot in height limit. And I'll read right from 3.6 residential development standards for non-beachfront lots. It says shall not be higher than 18 feet above natural or finished grade, but it does include including rooftop parapet and deck walls and railings when it's supposed to be 18 feet or below. And then the next paragraph, when you're allowed to get a site plan review and maybe go up to 24 feet, it's for flat roofs or 28 feet per pitch roof. No mention at all about deck walls or railings. And it does say, in no event shall the maximum number of stories above grade be greater than two stories. To me, this is this rooftop deck is, is essentially a third story, although it's an outdoor one and it's a big one. The house itself, which is visually a part of the Ramirez Canyon neighborhood because it's goes down inside the canyon walls, not, it's not, as I said, it's not visible from Zoomers. It's part of the Ramirez Canyon visual, uh, area. And of the eight properties that are listed on attachment four in the back of the staff report that are in Ramirez Canyon, the average size of those is 2,484 feet, which is only 37% of this 6,697 of this project, and that's without the rooftop deck. The rooftop deck in addition is some 2,700 square feet, which itself is bigger than the average size of the nearest houses that are listed in attachment four in Ramirez Canyon, because visually this thing is inside Ramirez Canyon. If you've gone there, you know what I'm talking about. But the average size of all 23 homes listed in appendix four, which includes, you know, the land of the giants that Don just showed you up there, up on, um, Zumeras and Canaan is still only one half, 48%, 3,259 square feet of this project, and that's not including the deck that I'm talking about. That's 27, uh, the 2,700 feet. So the, and in fact, this deck might be larger than the deck on the Surf Rider Hotel, I believe. Not sure about that, but it might be. The deck is for entertainment despite the noble attempt to camouflage it as an herb garden. And I know that because Mr. Isaac, when I met with him one-on-one, he's a very nice gentleman, told me that the reason the house is so large is because even though there's just two people living there, is they intend to do a lot of entertaining of their family and friends who come for visits. So I get that. Uh, you know, it's a herb garden today, but it could be an entertainment area tomorrow. And it screams out the rooftop deck as supersizing of the house as well as a major potential, major disruption to the neighborhood, either as an entertainment area or this is often the case with these, a short-term rental. And the whole project is basically, uh, an example of mansionization of the Ramirez Canyon neighborhood where it nestles itself. My request of the project not include the rooftop deck as it is. The size of the house itself is a significant departure from the local neighborhood. But if you're going to include the deck, I'd like to see some restrictions on, on, um, activities and lighting and that type of thing. That's, I think I've exceeded my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Who's up next, Kathleen?
We have Norman Haney, Mindy Panunzio, and then Beatrix Zalinski.
Norman?
Yes, can you hear?
Yes.
I'm, um, very familiar with this project. And so I'm, I'm, I'm going to look at the three issues that I've heard today. One is geology. And I think Don indicated that it was, uh, had a permit, uh, to do the work that was done. Uh, second, this project's going to be supported by deep-seated caissons. Um, I don't know if they're going to go down 30 feet or whether they're going to go down 70 feet. But no matter what, how far they go down, they're going to stabilize this hillside more than it's currently stabilized. The other issue was size. I do believe that the neighborhood that was described by Don is the neighborhood that should be considered for this project. And, uh, there has been a reduction of over 1,000 feet, which is 13.65% from the time that the planning, the, uh, uh, this project came before you last time. Um, last but not least is the deck. So people do use their decks for entertainment. Um, patios have swimming pools. Kids play in the water and scream and push their brothers and sisters in. And that's part of Malibu. That's outdoor entertaining. Malibu is an indoor-outdoor uh, living type of city. If you want to put restrictions on the use of deck, then let's go back to the city council and put those same restrictions on all decks in Malibu, including the ones that face the ocean. And, um, you know, maybe we can limit the use of those decks to only during the day and not at night. And you know, put some type of a, a sound limitation on what emanates from the deck. You know, we do have a, a general law in the city uh, as, as well as most municipalities. It said, you're not allowed to disturb the peace. If somebody's making a lot of noise, you can call the sheriff and have them stop by and say, tone it down.
Whoops.
Oh, okay. That got a laugh from somebody. Anyway, I think that this meets the development standards uh, specified in the city ordinances. There are no ordinance against having a rooftop deck or using that deck. We, we don't know how it's going to be used. Um, and, and I shy away from thinking that we would put an ordinance on one deck and not applying it to others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Norm. Kathleen, who's next?
Next we have Mindy Panunzio.
Mindy? Can you unmute her?
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you for, um, having us here. Uh, I wanted to talk again about the rooftop deck. First of all, uh, looked up in the code for a, a definition for rooftop deck, couldn't find one. The only thing in, the only definition I found was a deck, meaning an open porch or platform which projects more than two feet from an adjacent structure or is freestanding. So, uh, what we have here is a rooftop that, um, is being expanded into and what we're calling a deck, but the, uh, development standards don't recognize, it doesn't seem to me, a rooftop deck. You know, I'm also kind of thinking of what, uh, Commissioner Jennings had to say about what is, when you're looking at a problem, you're looking at what is the purpose of it? Here we have, um, standards for slope decks and flat deck, uh, flat roofs. I'm sorry. Uh, the idea of having a slope roof, I think, is so that you don't have a big mass. So they, you, uh, made the requirement for a flat roof, it had to be even lower. But what we're doing here is adding a whole, uh, I, I know you won't call it habitable area, but it will be used as if it's a habitable area. And, um, it, so it's reasonable to assume that there'll be furniture and people, uh, enjoying this space. And I, I would, um, also suggest that in a residential area, we don't expect people standing on the roof. That that intrudes into a privacy situation. Whereas, okay, you might say, because my private view is not protected. When I look up the hill at this structure, I shouldn't have a problem. Uh, because I can just look out to a different window in a different way. But in fact, the, uh, the idea that there are this massive desk deck where people will congregate and they can look down on me, not only me, but my neighbors and uh, in, into private spaces that people didn't anticipate would be, um, would destroy their privacy. Um, I appreciate Mr. Azad. He's a, a very nice gentleman and, um, so it's, I believe that people have the right to develop their land, but this deck uh, is poor planning, I think. And you have the discretion to say no to this and say you should have a slope roof. Um, and, uh, avoid the problems that, you know, the people in Ramirez, uh, foresee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Kathleen, anybody else?
We have Beatrix Zalinski.
Right, Beatrix. Can you unmute her?
I think I'm, I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, uh, um, planning commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, hopefully everybody received the letter that I sent out. Um, I noticed that, um, Planner Mario seems to have misunderstood one of my statements where I pointed out that the initial grading on this property was illegal. I do understand it was permitted after the I pointed out that the initial grading on this property was illegal. I do understand it was permitted after the fact. But my point is, in his chart, he's acting, uh, he's, he's listing um, the grading that's already happened as if um, it, it didn't happen. So what I'm saying is it needs to be included in the grading and therefore I believe it needs um, um, a variance because there's so much of that grading cumulatively between nineteen ninety and now. Um, secondly, I disagree with his interpretation of the LIP sections three point five and three point six. When you read those, there is no mention anywhere of a rooftop desk, a desk, deck. It almost seems like that concept isn't even um, entertained when you read the LIP. And um, in a residential neighborhood like Ramirez Canyon, y- you can't, you can't have a rooftop deck. It's like the Hollywood Bowl. The noise is, it's an instant nuisance building. Um, it's a pretty close knit neighborhood in Ramirez Canyon. It's a beautiful rural neighborhood. People are friendly. But when you've got a building that's going to be disturbing the neighbors, even if they just go up there and turn on their radio while they're watering their herbs, you know, it's um, poor planning. And um, this hodgepodge of the elevator having a pitched roof, so it gets to be twenty eight feet tall, but the rest of the roof is flat, so that gets to be twenty four feet high. That doesn't make sense either, because if you read the LIP, it's very particular. When it talks about a flat roof, it can't be taller than twenty four feet, and that includes the satellite dish. So this separating out the elevator shaft as if it's not part of the house, that, that's uh, that's not following the law. So um, yeah, inclu- and we can't legislate what people do on the roof. Maybe they'll plant an herb garden, or maybe they'll have parties, or maybe they'll rent it out for parties. And then now we've got an unpleasant situation that could have been avoided if we would have just followed the LIP in the planning. So I am asking you to um, send them back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Don, I think you have, that's, that's all of the speakers from the public, correct, Catherine?
That is correct. We just have rebuttal.
Okay, Don, you have four minutes and four seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you. Am I successfully unmuted?
You are.
Yes, you are.
Kathleen, if you could put my time up, please. I'm going to forego putting additional slides up there. I'll wait till Kathleen gets my, my time set up. Thank you. Again, Don Schmitz on behalf of the applicant. I actually, I agree with Beatrix. Follow the LIP, follow the LCP. And I would ask anybody to trot out and show me the regulations that preclude a rooftop deck. In fact, I would ask anybody to try out the regulations in the municipal code or in the LIP or the LUP that says that a rooftop deck is something which is subject to the site plan review and a neighborhood character analysis. It's not there. In fact, this city has approved many, many rooftop decks from one end of Malibu to the other over the years. You've got very specific criteria in regards to what you allow. In fact, th- if you're going to have a rooftop deck, which has been done for decades in the city of Malibu, the twenty four foot height must be measured to the top of the railing, which answers uh, Commissioner Mazza's actually very sage query. How the heck do you get out of the elevator? Well, the, the uh, actual uh, deck floor is lower, Commissioner Mazza. Uh, the twenty four foot is measured up to the top of the railing and the surrounding area. Uh, Mr. Mullen uh, wants to say that visually this property is part of Ramirez Canyon. Well, you know, that's fairly subjective, first of all, and second of all, that's not what the code says. I think we ought to follow the code here. And if you have a neighborhood which has a completely different accessway and road system, it's not part of the neighborhood for where that development is proposed. That's what our law says. And that's what our analysis shows. And in fact, if you go off of Zumarez, the second story up there is on average are three thousand seven hundred and seventy square foot. And the average sized house is eight thousand three hundred and forty seven square feet. This house is going to be one of the smaller ones. Its second story is going to be one of the smaller ones. Our next door neighbor talked about the deck and privacy. For a moment, I thought she was going to speak towards her view protection. She veered away from that. I would point out, by the way, that my client's deck is proposed on the opposite side of the property from where uh, Mindy's house is located. We're not cavalier about this. I would point out also that from the ground floor of my client's property is already forty feet in elevation up above our next door neighbor's uh, property, the Panuzios. So the rooftop, the rooftop deck is, is uh, we're not cavalier about it. We understand the stated concerns. But the concerns which are being stated are not something which are predicated on code. With the notable exception of the lighting, and uh, we have already agreed not only to the dark sky ordinance as it pertains to uh, any lighting on the deck or anywhere else in the property, but we think that uh, we, we again wish to go to the next level as it pertains to any lighting up there. And so that it is completely shielded, so none of it is pointed down at the Panuzios property uh, uh, down below us. There was a number of questions which were raised. Mr. Hill talked about rumors and in the windows of a fault rupture. Uh, no, there's no fault rupture underneath this property. This property was exhaustively reviewed by geoswells and by the city geologists, including an analysis as it pertains to any sort of seismic uh, uh, faulting or any uh, problems with that. It's simply not there. Uh, in regards to a variance, not for driveway width, uh, there was and is a variance for grading the driveway because we have sliver slopes which are more than two and a half to one. But you simply cannot develop a house on this property at all, meeting the fire department standards uh, without having a variance. In regards to the walkways, I touched briefly on this, Commissioner Hill. Uh, the citation you gave is for projections into the setbacks. None of the fire department uh, accessways around the house will be in any of the prescribed setbacks from the LCP. So uh, we're very much in support of the staff recommendation. We think we've designed consistent with the directions we were given, and we would urge you to support the staff recommendation of approval. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Don. Uh, all right, so that concludes the public hearing. We'll take it from, I will to close it now and bring back to the commission staff. We're in a difficult position, of course, because there are only four of us and um, we have yet major matters to contend with. So I would like to move through this fairly rapidly because I don't know whether we're going to be able to get a three to two vote. If we're not going to be able to get a three, if we're not going to be able to get a majority vote, a three one voter, or that would be a three one vote, um, then I would like to find out that sooner rather than later and um, and move on to the other items on our agenda. So John, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, one of Didier. Is it correct the rooftop deck is twenty seven hundred square feet? Which I think uh, is one of the speakers said. Do you know that number?
I don't have that calculation in front of me. I would need to uh, open up the project plans.
Okay, uh, maybe I'll ask Don. You, then you wouldn't know how much of it is this roof garden either.
No, I don't have that number.
Okay, you could, uh, excuse me, can you unmute Don? Maybe he has that information. Kathleen, can you, there he is.
We're working on it. Okay, so um, the total planting covered area of the deck is one thousand eight hundred and fifty square foot, and the remaining is the uh, walk rounds elevator and the H back.
So there's no, no uh, rooftop deck where, where humans can walk?
No, there, no, I said there's, there's walkways in between them. They're actually in the staff report. And if you want me to pull up a PowerPoint slide, I can show you exactly the footprint of the gardens and the deck area up there and, and I can do that if you wish.
There's, there's, there's some pictures in our, in our staff report.
Okay, and then um, is there anything in the resolution or anything else that requires the garden area to remain? Either Didier or Don.
Uh, to, through the chair, Commissioner Mazza, no, there is not. But we would accept in the resolution a condition that to remove the rooftop garden would require an amendment of the coastal development permit.
Okay. And then how big are the other decks on the second, on the first and second floor?
Oh.
They look fairly large.
Yeah, I don't know if I've got that right in, in front of me in my notes, Commissioner.
So are you, is it guessing three, or Didier, do you know?
I'm trying to run the calculation on Adobe.
Well, can you move on to something else, John, while we're waiting for?
Okay.
I, I could point out relevant to that, that the top floor is approximately the same as the second story, which is twenty seven oh five. So they're, they look roughly contiguous.
You know, they have decks.
The top.
So, oh, you mean the deck is twenty seven?
The, the top deck is roughly the same as the second floor uh, diagram for the two thirds rule stuff, so. And that's twenty seven hundred, so I'd think it would be that, give or take.
Yeah, Commander Hill is correct about that.
So there's, there's about twenty seven hundred square feet on the second floor and how much on the first floor? Patio area.
Well, we don't know about patio area.
Well, whatever's, I think there is actually a deck there. I have the plans in front of me. I'm just trying to get an idea of how many thousand square feet could be occupied by people in a party. And if, you know, it's
A lot.
A lot. So five, six thousand is a decent number.
That's like having too much money, is it?
Well, it's like having a lot of people there at one time. Um, you know, we're talking about noise here.
Uh, okay.
Okay, another question for Don. I don't understand how you, and maybe you can explain it to me, how you satisfy the dark sky ordinance which requires downward facing shielding and not have a downward facing shielding to the people below you and it, it prohibits upward facing shielding. So you have upward or downward facing shielding, or how do you shield it?
Kathleen, can you unmute Don?
There we go. Uh, I'm back. So uh, that's a good question, and the way that you do that is you have downward shielding and you make sure that any lighting, especially on that critical southern portion of the structure next to our, our neighbors, the Panuzios, is pointed completely away from them uh, back towards the decking area. It's, it's, it's uh, traditional, no uplighting, no directional lighting in the, in the wrong way. So we can both shield it and we can make sure that we have it pointed in the right direction, so it's not going anywhere near them. And, and remember, the dark sky ordinance requires that spillover light at the property boundary is not more than one candle. I mean, that's, that's very, very low in and of itself.
No, okay, I'm just uh, uh, it also doesn't allow you to light up the sky, so.
Correct.
So how do you keep that from happening? It has to be at least six feet high for people to walk around, right?
No, sir, it doesn't. Along the deck, it can be, it can be very, very low. The, the railing is forty two inches. Um, it's, uh, we don't need to have light standards sticking up in the sky. In fact, I think that that would be something that would be inappropriate, both in regards to the height limitations which we are under, uh, but also the lighting uh, considerations which uh, you're, you're implementing on this. So no, there would not be any light standards up high. They would all be low, you know, uh, knee level and all pointed away from the neighbors inward onto the deck area.
Okay, and I just um, wanted your comment on the fact that one house over, I guess it's Panuzios and then somebody, and then there's a road that goes between that house and Ri- and Rick Mullins' house that goes from Ramirez Canyon to Zumaras. Isn't that an outside, an access from Zumaras?
Private road, and Rick has it chained off, I believe.
Well, all of Ramirez is private road.
No, no, I mean, that, that's, that's never been, in the years that I lived there, you were never allowed to go up and down that road, anybody.
Okay, um, so basically, am I correct when I'm thinking about that, there's, there's over five thousand square feet of decking? And um, on a two person house. Now, how about the other decks? Are they protected from light pollution?
Yes, the whole project is conditioned to comply with dark sky ordinance, so that would include the entirety of the project.
And I have the number for the lower deck, Commissioner Mazza. It's one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet.
Plus twenty seven.
Yes, I, I also want to reiterate what Didier just told you. The entire project and all the decks and the entire property would be subject to the dark sky and with the extra uh, condition that it cannot in any way, shape or form be pointed to the neighbors.
Okay, and are there any provisions for maximum occupancy? Could you have a party with five hundred people?
I mean, if I'm invited.
Well, I'm thinking weddings.
Well. Uh, no wedding.
You can put in five thousand people, five hundred people in five thousand square feet.
Uh, all frivolity aside, Commissioner Mazza, a party over uh, of that size or, or a twenty percent of that size would require a temporary use permit uh, from the city of Malibu. So the answer is no, you could not.
Yeah, it's a spectrum of permit, but yes.
I don't, I don't really believe the city of Malibu wouldn't give you a T U P.
Yeah, there's, uh, okay, that.
Okay, I, I'm done with my questions for now.
Good. David?
Uh, well, actually, my question, Jeff, is that you having lived across the street for ten years, I'm very interested in your opinion as to whether you believe this proposal is consistent with what you regard the neighborhood character be, or have been.
Well, I lived there in the seventies and early eighties, so it's, it's quite a lot of water has flowed under the bridge since then. Uh, Malibu or Ramirez Canyon was, I believe, a much different place than it is now. Uh, there's been a lot of development in the area. Um, and uh, as far as, if, if you're asking me specifically as to whether I believe that the uh, having a, a height above eighteen feet is i- in opposition to or has a deleterious effect on the neighborhood character, uh, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Craig?
A couple of questions first and then some observations. Uh, for staff, um, Don just showed a picture of a biology review in his slideshow that is not in the packet. I didn't see it, and in fact, the packet says that the, the bio review sheet says that it, because a prior CDP was issued, and I'm quoting here, the biological assessment and review of the project by ERB are not required. Is that? So what, what is that review he showed and what was its date? Was that from the nineteen nineties or is that more current?
I have to, um, Don, can you answer that question? But yes, that uh, what you wrote, what you read was the condition of approval um, by our biologist. So because there was a previous CDP approved there, ERB was not required.
Through the chair. Well, Don?
My question, when was that report? What was that report and when was it done? And why did, why didn't we get to see it?
Uh, well, that's two questions. Let me ans- answer them both. Your, your analysis and, or your statement in regards to the findings is correct. It did not, it was not required to go to the ERB because it did not impact ESHA. However, the project was uh, reviewed and approved by the city biologist pursuant to the consulting biologist uh, Ford uh, uh, biological consultants. And it, it was not going all the way back to the eighties or nineties. This was part of the application process to the city of Malibu over the last two or three years. So it's very recent.
We did not have that in the packet. That's troubling to me.
Um, you won't have copies of biology reports in the packet, Commissioner Hill?
Oh, I, don't we always? I, I see, I see those often.
And unless there is some special case where uh, it's an appendix to the initial study, we have not been including these, a, a biology report, wave up rush reports, geo- geotechnical reports are all on file at the city, but we haven't been including those as attachments.
So, we're at about nine thirty. Uh, i- is there any inclination on the part of any of the uh, commissioners to perhaps frame a motion?
Not nearly yet.
So you just gotta, just, we, there are just so many issues to talk about that you can't frame a motion. You don't know where you want to go with it.
Th- that's correct. I don't know whether I want to say no to the whole thing or whether I can see my way to saying a yes with conditions.
Okay, so David?
Well, no, I was going to make a motion, but I think uh, you know, I.
Anybody can make a motion.
I, I would uh, move to adopt the staff report and approve the proposal, the uh, the project.
It's staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Question?
There are seconds to the, hold on, is there a second to it? I will second it, go ahead.
Would you, uh, would you include any of the voluntary, uh, provisions that Don has mentioned?
I certainly, I include all of them. Uh, but, you know, most specifically, I guess, you're, the concern about the deck, that it, the, uh, I, I mean, to me, it's literally window dressing, but that it wouldn't, uh, remove the planters without first coming and getting permission to do so.
And the, the lighting, I assume you include the, 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 uh, provision that there would be no, uh, lateral light spill, uh, from the rooftop?
Yes.
I've, I've got, I've got more, I can't get anywhere near a motion yet.
Well, we have a motion, uh, so if, if, if there's, um, you, you see what I'm trying to do here is actually get this, to get us, get our work done. And, and, and if we're not going to be able to come up with a vote on the motion, then let's move on to something else where we can possibly get something done. Uh, we can talk about this all night long, and there's lots of fascinating things to talk about, but really, we have a lot of work to do, still. So, if, if, is there further discussion that you really require in order to be able to formulate a vote on this motion?
I do, yes.
All right, what, let's go, talk about it, what is it?
Okay, a question for Trevor. Um, the coastal act, or, uh, the, the LCP takes its authority from the underlying coastal act, correct?
Yeah, our, our LCP was adopted in accordance with the procedure set through the coastal act, yes.
My concern here is that the staff has said this prior grading permit occurred under the coastal act before we had an LCP. To my mind, the authority now and then, the underlying authority was the coastal act, and I don't see why we can separate the grading amount from then. And it's, it's quite relevant, because had that grading not been done, we would have had a bunch of other things here to deal with in terms of, uh, you know, the, the fuel mod, for example, was 100 feet then, not 200 feet. There may have been one-to-one slopes that we would have had to take out of the, the TDSF. The, the fact that we're just letting that slide through as, and saying, well, it was done before we had an LCP, but we had a coastal act then, and it's, it's all based on the coastal act. That's where the authority comes from, right?
Yeah, Richard, the history here, was there, uh, a coastal development permit issued by the coastal commission for this project?
Well, I think actually, to get at the point of Commissioner Hill's question, I think what Commissioner Hill is getting at is, does a thousand cubic yard limitation and, and those types of grading limit, did they exist in 1990, and the answer is no. They didn't, because what, uh, those provisions, to my understanding, were adopted in our LCP because they essentially tried to pull things out of our municipal code and apply those, um, as part of the code, as part of the LCP that we have today. So, the LCP that's in place today and its regulations are different. Uh, there might be some same, but like, for example, heights were 35 feet in that LCP, uh, or, excuse me, in the, uh, yeah, the LCP that was in effect in 1990. So, there were different development standards that have subsequently been replaced by the, uh, 2002 LIP.
Okay, fair enough, I'll keep it moving. Um, the effective neighborhood is Ramirez, the city is, in effect, is stopped from asserting that Zumares is the neighborhood, because in the past hearing, Adrian said, "You can't apply that requirement of the, the, the setback over the basement garage rule, because you can't see this from the street." So, you've basically sort of discarded the notion that this is part of the Zumares Street neighborhood, and I think it is really quite material that geographically, topographically, this is in Ramirez Canyon. So, you've sort of removed that argument that the houses on Zumares matter, because you're saying we're not going to apply rules as though Zumares is, is relevant to the house. Um, so, okay.
What's next?
Um, to me, the, the, I, I, I'd be fine with the, the whole house but for the rooftop. It just seems like the arguments that people have made, uh, the neighbors make a lot of sense. And, for example, if you, having a flat 24-foot roof, that's what you get, and then the elevator is sticking up beyond that. I, I think Beatrix was right, you can't pick and choose on that. Um, I, I think that the, the rooftop garden really causes the, the problem for that neighborhood. So, I would be inclined to vote against it for that reason.
Anything else?
I had, if, if it looked like it was going to a yes, I had a series of conditions I could throw in there, but I, I don't know that we even have that, so I don't know if I, we need to waste time on those.
Okay, let's call it, let's, uh, take a vote on it then.
Can I ask a quick question, Jeff?
Sure, John.
Does his motion include the restriction on removing the, uh, rooftop deck?
Yes.
Or not the rooftop, the, the garden?
The garden, yes, it does. It's the, it's the staff recommendation with the, uh, conditions on no horizontal light spill on the downhill side, plus, um, the, the condition that in order to, uh, that if, that if the rooftop garden were to be removed, it would require an amendment to the CDP. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
Kathleen, can you call the role?
Vice Chair Wild.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Is there another motion?
I move we, uh, send the item to the, the, uh, city council.
Uh, Trevor? Uh, there's not going to be a motion, uh, approving or disapproving, uh, it appears to me. Uh, and can we, can we just say that, that the, that the city council should take this up on appeal on its own, uh, on its own motion?
I recommend we go through, we, we vote both ways. You know, I, I think I would, I would also suggest, um, I, I'd first ask if, if there's, if the commissioners, you know, if there's any information or any kind of conditions that could be attached, that they would be interested in changing the vote if that was done. And I also would, um, maybe want to inquire from the applicant about, um, you know, if, if they are willing, if, if they have preferences to propose any type of redesign. I know they've been back before, or if they would prefer that they get a decision here and go to the council.
Right, um, let's do that first. But can you unmute Mr. Schmitz?
He is unmuted.
So, Don, you can count to three.
Yes, sir, although not very much, uh, these days, it seems. Uh, well, uh, we've been working on this for, uh, four years now. And, uh, no, I, if, uh, in fact, uh, we can't, uh, uh, seem to convince the majority of the commission to follow the staff recommendation, then I guess it needs to be taken up, uh, by the city council.
Okay, let me ask you a couple of questions this way. Is there, of, of Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Mazza, uh, are there conditions that you would propose that, uh, that would, uh, allow you to vote in favor of the project? Um, yeah, that's, I guess that's what I'm saying. Are there conditions that you would, you would put in that would make the, the project acceptable to you?
I would lose the rooftop deck. And I would just say, you know, normally, this is not supposed to be a popularity contest, but when we have neighborhood character in issue for a site plan review, hearing from the neighbors is, they're, they're the best arbiters of their own character.
I, I get it, so how would, how would we, how would we do that? I, I, actually, thinking about this project from the beginning, it always got to mystify me, because really, uh, a rooftop deck is the top of the roof. You, you didn't even really need to put in the fact that there was going to be a deck up there. You could walk up there and do whatever you wanted to, but, but given that, how would you, uh, Richard and, and Trevor, how would you suggest putting in a, uh, a, uh, a condition that would, that would do what Commissioner Hill is talking about?
What he's talking about is not really a condition, but a, a redesign of the project. I think he's saying that he, as proposed, he's unable to find that it would not adversely affect neighborhood character based on a number of characteristics, um, of the rooftop deck. And so, the question then would be whether the applicant would be willing to propose a modification to the rooftop deck or to the project, um, that would be potentially willing to satisfy, uh, Commissioner Hill that the project would not adversely affect neighborhood.
Can I be more specific, more specific? I, I, I understand that they can control the lighting, and I think they were getting pretty close to doing that, and we could maybe condition that further, but to me, the sound factor is a big deal, and, you know, just knowing acoustics and knowing how canyons like that behave, living in one myself, it's just like a beacon of sound. If you had two or three people up there with clinking wine glasses, that's going to bug people a quarter mile away. So, how, how do you, how do you, how do you address that?
No, I agree with you, I, I think the, the, the problem I have with that is that, is that there's also a deck and a swimming pool, and if people are out there clinking wine glasses, it's going to be virtually identical to the sound that you're going to get off the rooftop deck, in my opinion, but, John?
I think it's different.
Uh, I think, and this is a question for Trevor, can, can the, uh, motion say, um, no elevator access, no public access to the roof?
Uh, I, I think that's the, the key point there, and that's what I was going to add in, Trevor, was that it's also a matter of access. There's a convenience factor of getting to and from it, not more about getting to and from it for the purposes of repair work. That, that is another difference, too.
So, the idea is you could, you could eliminate the elevator?
Well, you eliminate all access to the roof other than.
You can't do that.
No, other than a four-by, uh, four-by-four, um, access, uh, for repair.
Okay, so, it, it, it's, it's a fairly radical departure from what, what the, what, uh, Mr. Schmitz was talking about. I don't think that that would, that would be something that would satisfy him, uh, or his client.
I do see him, he's got his hand up.
I was just gonna say, he, he's raising his hand, Chair Jennings, if you wanted to recognize him.
I can't see him, uh, okay, it, uh, yeah, okay, Don, um, if you can unmute, Don?
Yes, uh, to the chair, commissioners, uh, I've been in touch with my client. Uh, it's pretty sad, but it's been four years, he's not getting any younger. If, uh, if it gets us there by the elimination of the rooftop deck, uh, that seems to be the bone of, uh, controversy here than the upper rooftop deck. If we could get an approval tonight, we'll be eliminated from the project.
Okay.
I would like to add one other thing to, that it, it may not, any change in access to the roof must come back before us.
Okay, so I'm going to need some help here, Richard, can you frame?
Uh, we need some plans, uh, of how that would be limited? Is there an obvious way that we can adjust this?
Yes, it's, it's, I simply eliminate the elevator that goes up to the roof. I eliminate the railing around the roof, I eliminate the garden up on the roof. I eliminate the, uh, the rooftop deck, uh, Trevor, it simply becomes a flat roof.
And Don may ask, if we just put in the condition to help satisfy the commission that there shall be no, uh, internal access to the deck, and, you know, that way it's a ladder-type ax, or, excuse me, the roof, uh, no internal access to the roof from the building, it's all done via a ladder, is that fine?
Yeah, look, I, I understand the intent here, um, that there should, it should not be, uh, uh, a deck. Uh, of course, uh, all flat roofs, all roofs tend to have mechanical, uh, and maintenance access, and that's what we're talking about here. So, you know, it's good faith, and good faith is we eliminate the railing, we eliminate the, uh, the rooftop deck, it becomes a flat roof project.
So, how could we, could we express that in the form of a, of a condition? Or do we have to ask that it come back as, and be redesigned? He wants it to be done today, I think that's a reasonable, uh, request, given the amount of time it's taken to get to this point. Uh, so, uh, why? How about if we do this? How about if we say that the subject, that the project is approved, subject to revised plans being submitted to the planning director, uh, showing, uh, removal of the, uh, the, the railing around the deck, uh, the, uh, elevator, uh, and, um, and that, and that's it, actually. Because, because you, you, it's, it's not reasonable to say you can't have, uh, interior access to get up there to do, to do maintenance work. Um, so, how about that?
I would like to, uh, add that any change has to come back to us, and that the resolution has to come back to us.
Uh.
We, 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 we could memorialize it in a resolution and bring it back on, on consent.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Do we have the fire hydrant in there?
Well, the fire hydrant's already, it's a, that's the, if you're listening, that was the fire department's requirement. It's already in there. So, um, so, when you say, Trevor, memorialize it as a resolution, second?
I would suggest that, you know, that you would make the motion to adopt staff's recommendation with the conditions proposed by, um, Mr. Schmitz, including the, the conditions, um, removing the rooftop deck, and I would say that, 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 um, those provisions, removing the rooftop deck specified by Chair Jennings and by Mr. Schmitz be done to the reasonable satisfaction of the planning director, and that a resolution memorializing that, um, be brought back to the planning commission on consent at the, would that be at the next meeting, or do you want to?
Let's do the next meeting, let's.
Let's try to get this out of here.
No, quickly, I'd like to add that any change has to come back to us.
Any change of what?
Access to the roof, or. Could we say? In other words, I don't want a planning director, four years from now, going, ah, go ahead and do it.
But, but the commission can't, you know, change what the jurisdiction of the commission is. If it needs a, an amendment, it, it, it needs an amendment. You know, you would have a condition in here, um, you know, that's, that's going to remove all, all of that. If, uh, you, you want to put other, you know, another condition on it, you can, but, um, you know.
One condition I'm asking for is that we make the decision if it changes.
Yeah, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make the motion that Trevor suggested. Uh, Trevor, you want to restate it?
Sure, that, the, the motion would be, uh, staff's recommendation, including the changes proposed by Mr. Schmitz and Chair Jennings, and that those conditions that relate to, um, the removal of the, the rooftop deck, um, include a, a plan that is approved by the, the, there's approved by the planning director, um, to meet the, to the reasonable, I'm sorry, sorry, uh, that is, that is, uh, approved by the, the planning director, um, to meet those conditions, and it just be brought back, memorialized in a, in a resolution, to be brought back on consent at the next planning commission meeting.
All right, that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Craig?
He was second, he had.
I thought he had his hand up, I'm sorry, and he's muted. Um, okay, that's moved and seconded, there's a further discussion. Let's call a question, please, Kathleen.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hill?
Mr. Hill, you were muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that motion, uh, was, uh, for to nothing, and we, that concludes item 4B. May even actually make it into new public hearings. Unfortunately, I, I regret now that I allowed John's suggestion to go forward, because we're gonna, probably going to lose the CUPR, uh, project. But let's go on with item 5C.
Excuse me, um, Chair Jennings, I'm going to go ahead and, um, invite, uh, Commissioner Smith back, if it's okay.
Yes, please.
You want to take a short break to give him a chance? I don't know if he's.
Why don't, yeah, why don't we do that? Let's take five minutes to come back in, it's now, I have, uh, 11 minutes of 10. Let's come back at, uh, five minutes of 10.
If everyone could, please turn off their video and mute themselves. If everyone could, please turn off their video and mute themselves.
Welcome back, Dennis.
I'm here. Did you get me? Okay, thank you.
Where am I? Oh, start video. Start video? There we are.
Hey, David. Come on, David. Came back just as I took a mouthful. All right, we're back on the. On the record, uh, the regular meeting of, uh, February one, two thousand twenty-one. We have item five C. Maybe we have a staff report, please.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Mary Wright. I'm a contract planner with the planning department. Item number five C is an application for a coastal development permit. And a variance for the phase two expansion of the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility. Next slide, please. By way of background, the entire treatment facility came about due to a Los Angeles Regional Water Quality. Control Board Resolution banning individual onsite wastewater treatment systems in the Civic Center area. Due to water quality concerns. The area is known as the prohibition zone and the resolution required. The phased construction of a centralized wastewater treatment plant for the area. Phase one became operational in two thousand eighteen. And phase two environmental documentation must be adopted by March thirty-first of this year. That's why we're very appreciative that you moved this forward on your agenda tonight. Phase two must be operational by two thousand twenty-four. Next slide, please. This is a, a vicinity map and aerial photograph showing the overall, um, site of the. Greater Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility project. And the, uh, star represents where the treatment plant site is. With pipelines and pump stations throughout the area. Next slide, please. The project description for this phase two project is, um, the project requires a coastal development permit number twenty zero six three. And variance number twenty zero four three for the phase two expansion. The major components include temporary construction trailer and other improvements at the treatment plant site. Pipelines, pump stations and other improvements within public and private roadways in the Civic Center. Malibu Colony and Sarah Retreat areas. Uh, the project also will, um, inject treated affluent that's not used for recycled water purposes. To existing injection wells and the project needs variance number twenty zero four three. For new development within a hundred will be, hundred feet of Esha. Next slide, please. This is the, uh, aerial photograph of the treatment plant site. It's a little hard to read, but it was in your packet. And this is showing the improvements proposed at the treatment plant site. Um, a temporary construction trailer is proposed at one of two locations in the southern corner of the site. And then various improvements, um, would go into the treatment plant overall, including new pumps, reactors. And, uh, more of what's already there. Next slide, please. This map too was in your packet. It shows the extent of the phase two pipeline and pump station improvements. The star again is the treatment plant site. The red lines show the pump stations. And recycled water pumps and the yellow squares, or I'm sorry, the pipelines. And the yellow squares are the pump stations. There were four originally anticipated for phase two. And there are five proposed with the current proposal. Next slide, please. Variance, uh, twenty zero four three, um, is needed because pump stations one and three would be slightly within the hundred foot. Um. Um, Esha buffer actually from Malibu Creek. All improvements though would be in the graded roadbed shoulder area. Uh, would not impact native habitat and as outlined in the resolution and staff report, we believe that all the variance findings can be met. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The city council certified the final wastewater treatment facility EIR for the original project in two thousand fifteen. And adopted findings and a statement of overriding considerations. The EIR included a project level review of phase one and a program level review of phase two. All impacts were determined to be less than significant except for construction noise. And CEQA states that an addendum to an EIR shall be prepared when only minor technical changes are needed and certain conditions are met. Then the, uh, the emphasis being that the new project would not create any new impacts or increase the severity of impacts. For all those reasons, the planning department looked at the phase two project and determined that an environmental addendum was the appropriate document. And that's what was prepared and included in your packet. Next slide, please. In summary, we are recommending that you adopt resolution number twenty zero five. Adopting addendum number one to the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility final EIR. And approving coastal development permit number twenty zero six three and variance number twenty zero four three. Next slide. Thank you, and we're available for questions.
Jeff, you're muted.
Disclosures, please. Craig? Craig, you're muted.
Okay, I sent a number of questions to Richard for clarification. I think he answered most of them. I have maybe a couple more to go here, but, uh, that's it. For disclosure.
Okay, uh, John?
Uh, I attended all the phase one meetings. So, other than that, nothing to disclose.
David? David, David? Can't see him on my screen.
Yes, uh.
There we go.
Uh, other than reading all of the answers to Craig's questions, nothing else.
And, uh, and Dennis?
Yeah, same, reading all of the answers to Craig's, uh, questions.
And I'm the same, okay. Kathleen, uh, have we got any public speakers?
We have two public speakers, uh, Marissa Kofflin and Don Schmitz.
Okay, so let's go back and do, uh, questions of, of, uh, staff before we open the public hearing. Anybody? If we have no questions, we can move on to.
Yeah, no, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, Richard, I, I, I was still a little unclear when it, when you found that you couldn't do the creek crossing. Cause of the boulders and so forth and thereby when it wanted to go around via the highway. Was the highway route part of the plan from the beginning and it was just going to be going both, from both sources? Or was the entire plan shifted to the highway side? And I, this all speaks to the, my overall question about. The dynamics and making sure that you have the pumping, uh, pressures all sorted out.
Uh, uh, so Richard, do you want me to answer?
Yeah, I was just going to introduce you, Rob, yes.
Hi, Rob, I didn't even see you there.
Oh, here, here I am. Um, yeah, it, it was, it, it was always envisioned having. Like, in, in phase one, it, it showed a creek crossing. Over in Sarah off of Cross Creek going over and then also on PCH. But during our phase one, we've had. So many issues with the depth of the pipeline that Cross Creek and Civic Center. Um, huge cobbles and everything going through the creek would have been a disaster. So, um. That's why we just were, we're rerouting and, and just using PCH. And, and we've, and we've done all the calculations to make sure the pump sizes and everything works right to flow through Sarah to get it over to. Um, PCH and down to our collection system. So everything works, should.
And, and on that routing, the, the, the design hasn't been finalized down there. So it's hard to imagine that the ERB could have made any recommendations about. Any potential impacts around the lagoon there. Like, can you, have you addressed that at all?
In, in regards to what?
Well, if you're, if you're running the pipe through the, the highway now. And you're going to be landing it on both sides of the creek and you're going to have construction impacts on both sides of the creek. Presumably, I, I don't know, how, how has that been reviewed yet? I didn't see that in the packet.
But that was already, go, going through the bridge was already part of the first phase. That was.
Okay, so that's it, okay. All right. And, uh, is there any sort of spill study? Like, what happens if there's an earthquake or something and we have a rupture right across the bridge there?
Oh, a, a couple of things to consider is that we, um, the pipeline is all encased. So if there is a rupture within the, the pipeline, it, it'll be contained within the steel. Steel, uh, casing. That's, it'll be a solid steel casing going through the whole, the whole bridge structure. And then at the very end of the steel structure, there's usually like, um, flexible couplings. So if there's movement within the bridge or on either side of it, is if there's differential settlement, um. Those flex, flex couplings will take up that information.
Got it. Good to hear.
But if there's, if there's a major, if it. Issue somewhere along the way, we have that pump station that will, that will take in consideration of what's kind of going on too.
Got it. Sounds, sounds great. Thanks.
Any further questions? Uh, John?
I just want to continue on that, um. Most of the sewage. That ends, that enters the ocean is coming from sewage treatment plants. So. Um. By huge volumes, um. On spill remediation. Uh, you're saying that the, the, as it goes over the bridge, it could survive an earthquake and not leak?
Uh, what I'm saying is that we have a steel casing. That's through there that if there is a leak that goes into the pipe. Um, it, it will all most likely stay within that steel, steel casing. Uh, unless it gets very severe, the bridge falls or something happens to where everything. Kind of collapsed and it's, it's a different story. So.
And, and, but are there automatic shut off valves or anything that keep any of this? You know, say, say they're going to take out the, the, the dam, okay? You've got a flood that goes over the top of the bridge and takes it out. Would it automatically shut off somewhere?
There's a pump station that's, uh, right outside Sarah on PCH. If, if something happens to the bridge or if there's something happens, that pump can shut off. And, and it, it will prevent wastewater from being pumped across the bridge.
That's automatic?
Or you have to. It can be, yes.
Turn valve.
It's, it, it's, everything is, is automatic with the treatment plant and with phase one, all of the pump stations. Everything is electronic, electronically monitored and looked at and controlled. It could even be controlled offsite when someone's at home. Um, they have everything on, on computers, looking at everything and they can control, shut off pumps, they can turn on pumps. They can do everything remotely.
Okay, now in Sarah Retreat itself, you've got some pipelines that service like. Oh, what's the name, Metalia de Oro and those streets that are fairly near the river. Is there any? Any automatic shut offs up there in case the pipes breaks? That's not encased, I assume, those pipes. So what, what happens if one of those ruptures and starts running into the stream?
So. The thickness of that pipe is. Probably. Over a half inch thick of, of plastic pipe. That is fused together. Um, it's. Uh, it, it is very, very strong and, and it's. Very unlikely that that pipe will burst, even with pressure. Uh, those pipes can withstand a pressure. Well over three or four hundred PSI, which, um.
ABS?
What's that?
ABS?
It's, no, it's even stronger than ABS.
Okay, now you hit it with a backhoe.
It's, but, but, yeah, but John, there, so the pipeline i- is a big plastic pipe and what they do is every joint. The joints are, could be like twenty feet long. They have this welding machine that welds the pipe, the, the pipes together. And, and all those joints come, they become part of the pipe and you can't pull them apart. They can't. It, it's, it's becomes one big continuous pipe. Very strong, very, very indestructible and, um, so.
And I'm just wondering, uh, what happens if you hit it with a backhoe?
If you hit it with the backhoe, then, uh, um. I, you, you know, once again, i- if you hit it with a backhoe, you'll, you'll feel it because most likely that pipe will. Well, you know, will not break unless you really, really. most likely that pipe will, you know, will not break unless you really, really damage it in any way. And so but most likely what happens is in those situations where you have a contractor working in the area, they're required to call up underground service alert, they're required to notify us that they're going to go out there and do digging. We mark the area, make sure that it's to show the contractor where a pipeline is. Contractor is responsible to go and make sure pothole locate that pipe and not damage it. And and in that case, that we monitor and making sure that that contractor doesn't damage that pipe.
Okay, but there's no you can flip the switch and shut the pipe off.
There, yeah, there can be a switch. If if something happens with with the pipeline and they damage it, there's pumps and everything else that we can look at and turn them off right away and and prevent spills. There's a whole spill and prevention program that our wastewater contractor or or maintenance contractor has to has to do put together, submit that into the regional board and make sure they're following it and preventing spills and and reporting those.
All right, let's open up the public hearing at this point. If there are other questions, you can raise them after the public hearings. Public has had an opportunity to speak. Kathleen, who we got?
First, we have Marissa Coughlin.
Marissa, could you run?
Yep. Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Jennings, thank you for moving the hearing along between council and this. I'm seeing you guys more than my family. As far as as far as some of the questions that Commissioner Mazza had and and also Commissioner Hill, there's been if they read the E I R, a lot of your questions, I think, will be answered. These systems are pretty much run almost like today's digital heart pacemaker monitoring. They're connected digitally. You have alternatives manually and everything. And in the environmental impact study and our public works department has spent a lot of time working with the consultants. I represent the Colony Association and many of the homeowners in there as well. And I've been working with all the consultants and there's been really a very prime concerted effort to address all concerns, including the bridge going across the bridge. And what Mr. De Beau said was accurate about it impacts on the creek. Those were all addressed. So it may just be beneficial if you want to look at there's hundreds and hundreds of pages that have already been done for this project. So that might be helpful to you. Other than that, if anybody has a question of me, we're coordinating now, just so that you might want to know, we're coordinating between all along, we've been coordinating access to go in there for monitoring and and creating the products that are needed for the completion of phase two. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Don Schmitz is next.
Yes, that is correct.
Commissioners, good evening. I'll keep it very brief and so that we can move this agenda along. Also, keeping very focused on the fact that this is a coastal development permit hearing in in other issues wouldn't necessarily be germane. I would like to comment that on the phase two timeline that was produced, one of the important considerations is a hundred percent designed for the sewer and recycled water, what we very often refer to as the purple pipe. I don't know that that was ever actually fully implemented in phase one for the existing commercial properties within the Civic Center. Just in in seeking a little bit of additional information, do we have the expectation when phase two is done and when this is all implemented that in fact, the the purple pipe and the recycled water will be strung throughout the entire phase one and phase two area for beneficial reuse of the treated wastewater for irrigation and refleshing of toilets and things of that nature. So I'll keep it again, Chair Jennings, very short. I just want to commend city staff. Mr. De Beau has gotten really good at this. And if that specific comment could be addressed, I would be grateful.
All right, thank you. That concludes Kathleen. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Nobody has signed up.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing now. We'll bring it back to the commission table and perhaps either Rob or or Richard would would address the question about the purple pipe and the availability of treated affluent for other purposes.
Yeah, I'll be able to do that. But thank you, Don, for those kind comments. And but yes, one of the things that I wanted to point out is that we that, you know, the city years ago entered into an M O U with the regional board on implementing these these phases. And in those in the M O U, there's deadlines that that are coming up and and in June of this year is when we are required to submit in a final design to the regional board. And and that design will include a collection system and recycled water throughout all of the the areas for phase two. And so those properties within phase two will have the ability to connect to the recycled water line to reuse that to reuse that. So.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, Commissioners, we're here for discussion or God emotion, maybe?
Questions?
Yes, Dennis.
I I just wanted to speak on the pipe. At Tuna Canyon, as you guys know, I built the road that goes upside the hill, and I've got all that fused pipe, all that four inch thirty two hundred and fifty five feet from the bottom to the top, along with my twelve inch fire line. That's all fused pipe, you guys. It's phenomenal. And along with the gas company, theirs is all fused. It's the only way to go, and it's very strong, very strong.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else? John?
This is for Rob. Did the E I R, maybe it's for Robert or a consultant or planner, but did the E I R cover the hundred year wave up rush, especially in the colony where we found out that it crosses the road? And what effect does that have on the long term effectiveness of this system?
So I'll I'll talk a little bit about the design over there at the colony and what we've done out there is coordinated with with Marissa going going in there, taking a lot of soil analysis and looking at the depth of the groundwater on how how that groundwater fluctuates, especially with with tide influence and just overall conditions of groundwater, because what we wanted to make sure is our system, our collection system isn't really affected by groundwater. What we've done is that we design our 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 collection systems, so we're above the with the depth of groundwater in that area. So I don't so I hope that answers your question, or maybe that's.
Really what I was after. I was after what happens in a hundred years if we do get the thirteen foot rise and sea rise? Obviously, the groundwater's got to go up if it's underwater. What provisions are made as far as expansion of the lagoon? The pipe may surface on a wave wave up rush that goes across the road, that kind of stuff.
So so everything's below grade. And once again, this is all that fuse pipe that Dennis was mentioning to where and all the structures that we have underground structures, the vaults, the manholes or everything will be waterproof to prevent groundwater and for anything to be coming into the pipe into the structures. And so any any rise in tide or water coming in shouldn't have any effect. If groundwater does rise, it's our system should be able to accommodate groundwater in there. It's under construction, putting putting this pipeline in. When you have high groundwater makes it very, very difficult. But once it's in, groundwater comes up, the the pipe and the structures will be able to withhold or to withstand any type of groundwater rise in that in that manner.
What I'm really wondering about is sea level rise, and are there any caissons that hold this pipe up if the ground underneath it disappears? Or if we have wave action where the pipe is?
There's there's no there's no pipe that is exposed to any wave action.
Okay, so what I'm going to do now is I'm not going to cut off discussion, but I do want to get a motion on the table, so I'm going to make it. I'm going to move that we adopt the staff recommendation, basically, that we adopt planning commission resolution twenty one dash oh five, adopting addendum number one for the certified Malibu Civic Center wastewater treatment facility project, final environmental impact report, and approving the coastal development permit twenty dash oh sixty three for the construction of phase two. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, moved to second is a further discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Getting back to the whole project itself. If we had, I assume you're pumping back to the the plant once you collect in Sarah Retreat and you bring it across the pier. I didn't see a pumping station identified that would pump it uphill to the to the treatment plant. How are you going to handle that?
So right now, there is a pump station on the east side of the Malibu Creek Bridge in P C H. That pumps all the wastewater all the way to Cross Creek. And from there, it flows by gravity over to the existing pump station that's in Legacy Park. That pump station has been sized to accommodate the flows for phase two and for actually for the flows for phase one, two, and three. From that location, wastewater will be pumped all the way up to the treatment plant.
So you cross the highway across creek, not up by the pump station? And not up by the the plant itself?
It it from Sarah, it goes on P C H, it crosses the bridge. And then that line ties into the collection system that's on Cross Creek. From Cross Creek, it flows by gravity all the way down to Legacy Park. Legacy Park, it has an existing pump station where it goes and it pumps that wastewater from Legacy Park all the way up to the treatment plant.
So it goes up Cross Creek. It doesn't go behind it by the river?
Correct.
Okay, let's get Craig. Have you got questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if I could put a condition on your motion that in the Sarah area and around the creek that we have an archaeological monitor on site for the actual excavation, the actual trenching moment.
Where's where's the Mary? Is she still there?
I'm here. Thank you.
Oh, Mary. Isn't that already part of the commissions?
We have a mitigation measure that states near the known sites, they have to have archaeological monitoring. And if other sites are found in other areas, then they have to bring in people. So we could potentially modify that to include the areas that Commissioner Hill mentioned.
My my sense would be to say in terms of known sites that you have to pretty much assume that anywhere in Sarah or along the creek there could be and and everywhere else maybe not. And especially even the colony, there's so much surf action and whatever for over centuries out there. I don't think we're going to see anything at the colony, but Sarah and the creek, maybe yes.
The way I read it, I thought that that those areas were already considered to be known sites, but maybe not. And so it does if if, fine, I will accept that as as a friendly amendment if David will accept. David, you were the second, weren't you, now?
Second to your motion? No, I think it was Dennis.
Oh, it was Dennis? Okay, Dennis, were you accepting the the change? Okay, fine. Okay, we got that. Anything else, Craig?
No, that's it. Well, let me just say, I asked a lot of questions on paper this time and and, you know, it I think it limited my comments here tonight to five minutes instead of fifteen, so.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Okay, so John?
Yeah, I have some more questions. And I guess the planners are what I'm going to ask.
We've got five minutes before ten thirty. We might be able to get that other matter in.
Five minutes? Yeah. The original M O U specified a phase two and it drew a line what phase two was. And then the city council changed that to cut Hughes Laboratories in on the deal. Did we first, did we go back to and get a change in the M O U?
I do not know that answer.
All right, I'll answer that. So so, yes, we can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, my my internet was said it's not was unstable. So so once we were looking into adding H R L into phase two, we reached out to the to the regional board and asked them that specific question. You know, would we need to revise the M O U to include that? And they responded, no. The city has the has a discretion to add properties to phase two that they feel fit. So so phase two on the map is a minimum. And if we wanted to add more to that, that's that's up to the city to to decide that.
Okay, now, if the line goes up to Hughes, does phase three pay for that partly or at all?
No.
So they get the advantage of having a line up to Hughes when phase three comes along?
If I'm not following you.
Three is right across the street from Hughes.
Correct.
And it's supposedly going to cost you like three million bucks to go up to Hughes. So are the people, the limited houses up there on Harbor Vista, are they going to be charged for that line when phase three comes along?
I'd have to look into that and see. And that's a probably a question I'd probably have to bring up with our assessment engineers and bond counsel to see if that's something that would be reimbursable or part of it will be reimbursable if if phase three comes in.
Okay, and then if you form the assessment district and it gets voted down. Okay. And and as I understand it, we've told Hughes, we have an agreement with Hughes, that we'll build you a line anyway. Do we have to go through and do another assessment like you're doing now or whatever it is, what we're doing tonight? Where only they vote or this thing all start all over again if it if it does not pass, but we were obligated to put that line in?
So if they pass, then that we would figure out some.
I didn't hear that.
We're losing you, Rob.
Yeah.
I think it went unstable there.
He's back.
You're back.
I don't know what happened. I don't know. So we would figure out if it didn't pass, we would figure out financing for the H R L.
But you would you have to have a new assessment district?
Potentially.
Potentially. Yeah, I mean, it's not really part of the project, you know, right before us, right?
Yeah, getting to that, it's not really relevant to our to this project.
Well, it could cost the city a bunch, but.
Further comments or can we get a vote, John? It's almost ten thirty.
Okay. One real quick last question. Is it still the situation where the condos across from the plant have to abandon their plant and join the district? Or can they keep their plant?
According to the to the regional board, they will have to abandon their plant and connect into the collections or to the to the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility.
Okay.
All right, we're done with the discussion. Let's call the question. Kathleen, please take a vote.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wild, I mean Vice Chair Wild?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
I assume these include Craig's stuff.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes item, whatever it was, five.
C.
E. And we're now at five A. Five A is the project at three oh one eight one Cuthbert Road. We have a staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. Uh, the next slide, my agenda is coastal development permit for a for project located at three oh one eight one Cuthbert Road, which was continued from the December seventh, twenty twenty planning commission meeting. Next slide, please. To refresh your memories, the property is located on north side of Philip Avenue and the west side of Cuthbert in the rural residential zone. Next slide, please. So the project before you tonight consists of a one thousand three hundred fourteen square foot additions and improved planning verification application, six thousand seven hundred eighty three square feet of new permeable coverage. View permeable front yard fence not to exceed six feet in height. Rear and side yard retaining walls also not to exceed six feet in height. A new pool and spa and a new onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, to refresh your memory as well, back in the December seventh meeting, there uh, has been a neighbor opposition regarding the height of the property. However, it has been determined uh, that this would be a civil issue among neighbors, as you have seen with the correspondence sent to each and every one of you since then. And uh, the proposed height of the residence is eighteen P, which is allowed by right in the municipal code and the L I P. Next slide, please. The property was previously developed with a three thousand one hundred seventy six square foot of one story, single family residence constructed in nineteen fifty two. Next slide, please. The uh, shown here are the elevation of the proposed project with heights not exceeding eighteen P in height or a flat roof. Next slide, please. The next slide, please. Here's a proposed first story for plan with a proposed addition. Next slide, please. And here's the proposed loft area. Next slide, please. Here is a slide for the renderings of the proposed project. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopts resolution number twenty one dash ten, approving their proposed project as conditioned. This includes our presentation and the app and the staff and staff are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's do disclosures, please. Craig?
Yeah. Um. Okay, well, first question, I I was told that I needed.
The disclosure, disclosure.
Yeah, 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 but by way of disclosure, I was told that I needed to have watched the prior uh, video or uh, otherwise I'd have to recuse myself. And before we go too far, I guess I should ask if if Dennis has heard the same thing I heard.
What was that?
That I was required to watch the pre the prior video, otherwise I'd have to recuse myself.
I I didn't, I haven't heard that.
No?
I I spoke with Commissioner Commissioner Smith and he said that he attended this uh, this hearing.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I just wanted to get that off the table before in case he could say goodnight. Anyway, I uh, let's see, I visited the site, I generally got the lay of the land there, I confirmed that the still existing foundation is of a width was a width for two cars, not one. Uh, I contact, I had contact with both the applicant and the neighbors separately by email and by phone. I sought clarification of the status of the current legal dispute, specifically in regard to several documents in the file that seemed incomplete. In requesting that documentation, I learned that the documents had been distributed to the prior commission, but not to this one. And so everything I received, I copied directly to Kathleen to distribute to everyone in case any of that had not been previously submitted. I learned that the deed restriction on height confirmed May twenty first, two thousand four is running to the benefit of the Sotopur's land in which they were expressly named in apparent satisfaction of Civil Code fourteen sixty eight requirement. In the video, Patrick said that the city won't take a position on civil matters and that the standard the city needs is a preponderance of the evidence. But he also conceded that the situation is unclear at best, is a quote, and that something was recorded. Um, I'll have more on that. So I whether or not code fourteen sixty eight is is uh, how how that works is seems immaterial because the Sotopur's are expressly named in the quick claim made in two thousand four. One of the documents submitted and copied to all was a Coldwell banker listing from twenty ten, specifying the assessor's square footage on the subject site as two thousand two hundred ninety eight. Staff estimates three thousand one hundred and seventy six, that's a difference of eight hundred and seventy eight square feet. The garage could account for some of that, as we know how the assessor measures things. Uh, but uh, that would, doing the math on that, that would still leave over five hundred square feet uh, unaccounted. And and regardless, Mr. Spunt offered to me that maybe the actual T D S F was twenty nine something, not the uh, thirty one something that on the staff report. So that's my disclosure.
I, Commissioner Hill, I believe you also, I, to clarify, you did review the record from the prior hearings, so you're familiar with?
I I did, yes.
Okay.
Um, yes, David, disclosures.
I visited the site uh, last time it was on the agenda. Uh, did a walk around on my own and then I had a couple of telephone conversations with Vitas, the architect, and uh, discussed primarily, uh, well entirely, things that were already in the staff report and read the uh, correspondence that was generated by Craig's questions to the staff that was distributed to all of us.
John?
I visited the site with Steve Euring on the last uh, time I heard it. I also briefly spoke to Vitas, less than three minutes. Um, learned nothing from him. And I visited the site uh, and read everything else. That's all I, I did not learn anything that wasn't the staff report, other than Craig's comments.
Um, I had a brief conversation with the applicant, uh, but really not regarding the merits of the project, uh, having to do with technical issues of appealability to the coastal commission. Um, and uh, that's it. So questions of staff?
Hi.
David, Dennis, you have your head up?
Yeah, well, I, as far as disclosures, I I've driven by that.
Oh, did I miss you? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, I've driven by that a lot many times, I liked it. And um, a brief conversation with Mr. Spunt, just he called us to introduce himself, and that was it.
Okay, now, questions of staff. Any questions of staff?
Uh, well. Trevor, yeah. What what is the, is there a city policy or or rule on how much time must elapse between applications? I've heard informally six months, but is that a rule or is that just sort of a? I don't know, you can you can finish my sentence for me.
Who are you asking?
Trevor, we have, we have here, there was one application in February and I guess that was the like for like, and then it was revised in August uh, with a new application. So I just wonder, is there a rule about that or is that something we even care about?
If there's a denial, is there a full denial of a project, then you're prohibited from bringing back basically the same project for a like a year period after that, uh, as long as it's denied with prejudice, but I don't believe we're in that situation here.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. I I had a question on the just the the burden here. It seems to me, I mean, my overwhelming feeling here is that we're we 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 don't decide these civil matters, but we have this hanging over our head, we have a court case in progress. It seems that there are merits on both sides, it looks like it, that there's nothing frivolous seeming about it. It seems like we should be letting that play out. What what, and yet the city seems to have taken the view that the applicant has somehow met the preponderance of the evidence standard, while the uh, the neighbor hasn't, and yet the neighbor has submitted a quick claim that that looks on its face to to satisfy this criteria. So how how do we not just say, let's wait till this is settled? Trevor, yeah.
Trevor?
Yeah, I I can jump in here. So um, when you have a one of these complicated, you know, cases, you know, regarding, you know, land use rights or covenants or easements, these are things we run into. Um, the city generally requires, you know, substantial evidence to be shown from the from the applicant that they do have the right to build. But um, in terms of the, you know, we don't make a final determination on that. You know, we're we're just asking them to provide this basis for the the application to go forward. Um, the city's permits only only what they say is that you have complied with the laws of the city. And you know, per per our rules, you are allowed to construct, but there could be other restrictions, you know, that would prevent you from doing that. And if you have covenants or you don't have the rights to that land and there's, you know, civil actions that can take place or, you know, if there's some other jurisdiction that also has reach over the the project area, you would also need those entitlements that would not come from the city. So just because we approve the project doesn't mean that they can necessarily build, they have to comply with, you know, all the rights, you know, that are involved there. But in this case, it's a civil matter and then the, if if they are illegally, you know, if they're they're constructing in violation of, you know, the covenants and land, then they can be enforced by whoever is listed on the covenants is having that enforcement right and they'll have to rip it out and they have all their their civil remedies available to them.
That's a mess. If if.
But it's the same reason why we don't, we don't uh, enforce uh, homeowners association C C R. Uh, we, you know.
But but it's not insofar as those are not things that run with the deed, which is that that's a fundamental to the land.
Really, they are, and but I, we're not lawyer, well, we're not, we're not, we're not doing the job of judges in this situation.
Well, and this is kind of my point, it seems like if if we, if you just in effect automatically lean towards the applicant in terms of that burden, then doesn't the city get exposed to liability for somebody else who says, hang on?
No, not at all.
No?
No. Trevor?
Yeah, we're we're all we're saying is that this project complies with our laws, you know, that it's built, you know, for the specifications, specifications of the municipal code or the L I P, you know, is applicable. On top of that, if the if the applicant gets the approvals, they also are gonna sign an indemnity, you know, provision that if the city did get sued, that these guys would be there then to defend it. And they very well may not start building until they get a, you know, determination from the civil suit, they may want to wait, but you know, get one done before the other, there's nothing prohibiting that.
Yeah, okay.
Trevor? Um. As a matter of disclosure, I built a house in nineteen seventy four that had the exact same conditions. And um.
Not not in favor of the of of the neighboring properties here, you just mean the same terms, right?
No, I had a house that had a view easement on it, the title company missed it. It was a lot split, my next door neighbor got it recorded and I didn't. So the city made me get a release um, to build. And the title company gave it to me because they were liable anyway. Then granted, that was a while ago and I'm not a lawyer, but how how do we determine what an easement is an easement? I mean, we normally look at projects and we say, oh, there's utility easement, oh, there's a road easement. We never even questioned whether it's legal. Um, we make the house move. Now, when it's a view, I'm when it's a a line of sight easement, it's still an easement, it still crosses the property and delineates certain rights. How do we have a difference between a road easement and a line of sight easement?
Primary view determination, they they would have to go down and get that first, Commissioner Mazza, that would be the whole thing.
What first?
The P V D. I mean, they're they're saying they didn't have a view and we shouldn't even be talking about this because it doesn't matter. But it it if if they have a problem with the view, that would that would start at the city that they went down and got their primary view determination taken care of.
Absolutely nothing to do with primary view determination. This is a easement claim.
In a deed.
Recorded in a deed. Okay, it's no different than a road or a utility easement or uh, an air, uh, area, like in New York, they sell aerial rights. Um. How do we determine which easements? We automatically make them move their house, make them do this, make them do that versus other reasons. I mean, right now, there's a road easement there. You gotta move away from it. How do we change that from, oh, there's a line of sight easement there, you don't have to move away from it?
Isn't one of the issues whether the road easement is is disputed?
Yeah. It's it's the same analysis, whether, you know, whether type of of uh, easement or covenant you're you're dealing with, you know, that they need to provide, you know, substantial evidence, you know, a basis for that they have the right to build where they are. If it's disputed, then it's disputed and they have their their civil claims, but they really have nothing to show that they have any right to do it, then you're in a different situation.
Uh, okay, so in in my case, I'm gonna, granted, it was thirty five years ago. They they made me get a release. Uh, the city did, before I could get a building permit, not a planning permit. In this case, if we approve this, can the owner walk into the city hall and get a building permit, start building?
Yeah.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Now, why is that?
Because they meet the city's requirements.
Well. What happens if they start building on the road?
Oh.
It's not gonna happen, Commissioner.
They haven't shown any right that they they have a certain type of right to build in the middle of the road. I think they would have problems establishing that.
Some other roads.
Okay, so we're gonna, these are, these are, these are issues that that really we're kind of getting into not questioning so much or debating the thing. So why don't we open up the public hearing, let the applicant have his say, let the let the opponents have their say because it's a quarter to eleven and let's get it done. So uh, Kathleen, who have we got?
I have the applicant team of Vitas Materi and uh, owner, I believe he's the owner, Howard Spunt.
Okay, who's gonna present or well, it doesn't matter. You've got fifteen minutes for the applicant team. Open up a mic.
Good evening, commissioners, this is Vitas. I'll keep it very, very short here.
Hey, Vitas.
I'm here just to answer questions that pertain to the plan code and the design of the house. Um, we're looking at a three thousand seven hundred seventy square foot house plus a garage. And we've compared it to other houses in the neighborhood, there's sixteen houses that are within a thousand feet of this place. And we're at the very low end of that spectrum. The average of all the houses since nineteen eighty is forty nine thirty five, not counting the garage, ours is thirty seven seventy. And then if you look at all sixteen houses, some of these are from before nineteen eighty, the average house size is thirty eight fifty four, we're still smaller, we're not trying to build anything enormous here. And we've come before you because we wanted to update the septic system at the same time. I misspoke last time, that septic system that's there is certified and has a five year operating permit on it. But we want to go ahead and add other plumbing fixtures inside the house. Uh, we meet all the setbacks, we're under eighteen feet. And that's pretty much the summary of the project itself. Uh, I know that the owner, Howard Spunt, was very eager to present his part of this last time we spoke and he didn't have the opportunity, so I'd like to turn this over to Howard.
Okay, thirteen minutes to go.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of planning commission, my name's Howard Spunt. Um, I've been working on this project now for a little bit over a year and uh, met with the city on numerous occasions prior to starting this venture. And um, we're given the criteria for going um, through this process. In terms of um, this title issue, I have two title policies uh, that ensure my right to build um, without restrictions. Those title policies were issued in February of two thousand twenty and again in July of two thousand twenty. In addition, when the neighbor made his claim regarding this um, supposed height restriction, I went back to the title company and they wrote me a letter uh, clearly stating that they would um, insure and provide legal representation to enforce my rights to build unobstructed with no height restrictions. This has all been given to the city attorney and staff. And as the conversation's gone tonight, they feel comfortable moving this forward on the merits of the project. Um, in addition, I have three neighbors who are in support of the project. Um, they think the design is very compatible with the neighborhood, both in scale and style. Those letters are in your packet on pages eighty six, ninety three, and ninety four. Um, yeah, I think it's important to get these homes rebuilt. We spent a lot of time. Um, yeah, I think it's important to get these homes rebuilt. We spent a lot of time and a lot of money providing all the reports and documents the city's requested. And, um, I believe this project stands on its own merit. And, uh, I would request the planning commission vote in favor and move this project forward. And if the neighbor happens to get injunction and I'm forced to stop construction, I will honor that. But to date, um, I've seen nothing that leads me to believe that some can happen or possible. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, you have eleven minutes and thirty, you have eleven minutes and thirty seconds of, of time you can use for rebuttal if you wish. Um, is, do we have any other speakers, Kathleen?
We have two members of the public, Anne Sadakpor and Saad Sadakpor.
Okay, so who's up?
I believe Anne will begin.
Okay.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Hello again, everyone. Uh, your hard work is much appreciated. Uh, we own the property to the north of the applicant at three oh one six three Cuthbert Road. We are surprised to see this original item reappear on the agenda since the planning commission asked the applicant to redesign the home and rightly noted that this is mostly a new home, not a fire rebuilt. The applicant is not a Woolsey fire victim, having owned the property for only one year. The applicant and LLC has sued us for attempting to protect our property rights as regards to height restriction on the duly recorded property title, which protects our view. They've also placed a retaliatory lispenance on our property, which we have owned for nearly seventeen years, as opposed to the twelve months they have owned theirs. The plaintiff in the suit is the applicant and not the title company. The title company is colluding with and defending the applicant, but the plaintiff is clearly the LLC. The applicant has chosen to ignore our rights and a pattern has emerged where they are likewise choosing to ignore the directive from the planning commission made on December seventh. We ask that, that this issue be continued until the suit against us is resolved and the judge makes his decision as regards the declaratory relief that the applicant has requested. The LLC is bulldozing his way through the permit process and the planning department is perhaps unwittingly allowing it. This could be interpreted as a lack of respect for us, the neighbors, for the planning commission, and for the city of Malibu. The city attorney has now required the applicant to indemnify the planning department on page fifteen of resolution number twenty-one ten of the planning commission resolution. Unless this is routine procedure, it appears that there is significant acknowledgement that the applicant may not prevail in its case against their neighbors, even if the city allows them to begin their building plans. We are asking that a continuance be granted so that the applicant be given another chance to right the egregious wrongs launched against us and to redesign their building according to the height restriction and actual city codes applicable to a new building. And that the planning commission honor its own December seventh determination. Although we agree with autonomy for landowners to build, keeping in mind city codes regarding neighborhood character and limitations, this belief in free choice does not go so far as to allow our neighbors to disregard our legal property rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next?
Next, we have Saad Sadakpor.
Okay.
Amayon?
Yes.
You were on.
Thank you very much. Uh, trusted members of the planning commission. During the December seventh meeting, the applicant's hired architect has stated that it is not the applicant that is suing us. In fact, it is the applicant who has filed a lawsuit wishing to transfer our recorded height privilege to himself. This architect has also operated, I'm sorry, this architect has also prepared a misrepresented plan, taking pictures of a high elevation, showing that our protected view is not affected. He has also inflated the original burned house square footage, a subject which is outside the scope of this presentation. The applicant did not follow the direction, the redesign directives of the December seventh meeting. And the only addition to his application is a letter of indemnification to the city. While the issue is in litigation, making a decision for one party is making a decision against the other one. This would be a judicial position that the city does not want to take. My understanding of the LCP and LIP of the city of Malibu in relation to this specific case is that the city must comply with both of the following criteria. Number one, height as defined it on page seventy-one of LIP section three point sixty-one, which prescribes the height of eighteen feet or lower from the natural grade. Number two, the legally recorded easement and restrictions must be honored. Both of the above criteria should be followed concurrently by the city. If the applicant is asking for more than fifteen and a half feet, he must prove that recorded height restriction is not valid. The court has not made any decision as of yet. A new, a lawsuit by itself does not constitute satisfactory evidence that the plaintiff has the right to build as he wishes. As defendants, my wife and I are not in control of this lawsuit. Perhaps the plaintiff can better, can better estimate when this lawsuit might be settled. Also, perhaps the city is in a position to request that this case be expedited. In the meanwhile, we respectfully request that the planning commission postpone making a decision until after the court order is received. I'm available for your questions and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else, Kathleen?
Uh, no, that is the last.
Okay, we will now close the public hearing. We'll come back to the commission table for.
Are we gonna do rebuttal for Vitas?
I'm sorry. It's getting late. Yes, uh, the applicant has, uh, what did I say? Um.
Thirteen minutes.
Yes, okay.
Well, I have nothing to add regarding the civil matter. I'm staying out of that entirely. But, uh, in terms of the size of the home and position of the home, it meets all the requirements of the local coastal plan and the initial planning verification, their address just rebuilding on the footprint of the house that was lost to fire. There is the discrepancy in the square footage. There was a small, uh, addition by permit. And that is included in the larger number there. And there's also discussion of the fact that the two-car garage had probably been converted without the benefit of a permit into an interior office and a one-car garage. That's not something we took into effect. We looked at this lab. There was a two-car garage. We treated it as a two-car garage. Anyway, in terms of addressing the civil matter, I think the owner, Howard Spunt, would be better at addressing that than I would. So I'm done.
Uh, okay, you have eleven minutes left, uh, for yourself or Mr. Spunt.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, real quickly, and it's been a long night for everybody. Um, as far as the square footage goes, the building that burned down was, uh, main dwelling, twenty-two hundred ninety-one square feet, garage, six hundred sixty square feet, and a workshop of two hundred twenty-five square feet. All of this information was submitted to the city, verified by the architect and by survey for a total of thirty-one hundred and seventy-six square feet existing prior to the home burning down. Um. You know, the loss is very unfortunate. Um, in August, I noticed, I, um, introduced myself to the neighbor and he notified me that he believed there was a height restriction. And for three months, we tried to have discussions to see if there's some common ground to work this out. Um, I did bring this attention to my title company, who again, for the third time assured me that this was not an issue. It's not on my title report and they agreed to defend me in any action necessary to protect my rights to build this building. Um, last time Mr. Sadakpor and I spoke, I said, look, let's just have agree to disagree. And, um, you know, I need to move forward as per my rights. Um, their pad is twenty feet above my pad. Um, so if you stand on their pad five feet up from where they're standing, there's no way this small portion of our building that's eighteen foot high blocks their view. Um, and again, at the meeting on December seventh, I was not asked to redesign the project, but the planning commission wanted to make sure they're clear on the ability to have the two entitlements be active at the same time. The plan verification and the coastal dohem permit. And since December seventh, I've talked to staff. We've looked at the precedents. We've talked to the city attorney and there's nothing wrong with having two active entitlements. That's why the, the, um, project was, um, continued, not because they asked me to redesign it. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so that does conclude the public hearing. Uh, we'll close the public hearing and come back to the commission table. For discussions, questions, possibly a motion?
Question?
Yes, John?
Um, I guess this is for Richard. There seems to be a dispute on what was permitted. And apparently, am I right? You resolved a higher number than what the, the the assessor, uh, or whoever permitted it back then was? Is that right?
Yes, Philip can go into greater detail, but I believe what we did is we took the most conservative of the values that we could find for square footage of that home and we utilized those numbers as our baseline. Correct, Philip?
That is correct. Based on our, um, the evidence that we found, actually there and aerial photographs, we determined that it was actually a higher square footage number. But the planner who approved the PV actually granted a lower square footage than what was actually there.
Okay, so you did this by looking at what was there rather than what was permitted?
It was both. We took both into consideration.
Okay, and so you issued a, a Woolsey permit for a hundred percent. And then now they're coming back adding square footage to that. Is a second permit? Is that correct?
Correct, as a CDP.
Okay, well, the, the Woolsey permit technically is a CDP, right?
No.
A CDP.
Um. Hmm, I believe last me, we, uh, Richard can chime in on this. It, the PBWF is considered over the count of permit, not a full CDP.
Okay, they have two permits. And, uh, so Trevor, can you explain why this is not serial development? Uh, I've been on here a long time and so has Jeff and up until very recently, we were always told that you can't have two permits at the same time and you have to wait six months in between getting permits. Is, is, has that officially changed? Did the city make a policy or what happened?
I, I'm not sure what, what policy we're referring. Richard, do you, are you familiar with what we're talking with, with what he's referring to?
I think this is the question that we had just discussed a few moments ago, which was if there is a denial, there is a certain amount of time that must pass before an application can be filed. Uh, but other than that, no, there is, you know, as long as the, uh, it just says in the LIP is where this section is and it says whenever feasible, there shall only be one application open on appropriate a time, but there's no limit to, um, a dis, separation between submittals.
No, I'm talking about a city policy. I, I know that that policy existed at one point because the house next door to me tried it. Um. So they got a hundred and ten percent and then they're adding more. Uh, was there any, any, um, the fact that interior space was bootlegged and changed makes no difference in your calculations?
Philip, do you want to answer that? Because as far as I know, we use the assessor's records, building permits, and we looked for square footage that we could document.
Right.
Right. But it didn't matter whether it had been reconfigured at all. Um, okay, and this is just either here nor there, I guess, but this did not, uh, this project did not get a Woolsey fee waiver, correct?
That's correct. It did not. They've paid for this.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I'm gonna call on David. David?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we adopt the staff's recommendation on this project.
A second. Okay, the movement's ended. If there's further discussion, it'll be. Somebody else want to discuss? Uh, is that, are you raising your hand, Craig, or not? I can't tell.
Yeah, are you done, John?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna vote no because of serial development, but that's.
Okay, well. Uh. I think our job here in upholding the, the public interest, we have, there's some onus on us to produce clear decisions. And that means in this case, not kicking the can down the road to a judge to do city planning for us. And I, I don't know, I, I guess I'd like to know, I think the case was filed when in November, October, who knows that? And is there any scheduled date? Do we have any sense of the timeline on the civil case? I guess that would be a question for Howard Spunt.
Mr. Spunt, can you be, uh, un, unmuted?
Yeah, I, I thought the, um, the time to speak was closed, but I'm happy to, to speak to that. So, um, as of today, there's a mandatory conference between the attorneys and the judge on, in May. Um, confidentially, there's been some discussion back and forth regarding a settlement, which, um, I hope we can resolve well before we get to any court. My intention isn't to litigate. This is the first time I've ever sued anybody in all my years of, um, architecture and construction. I've been used for thirty-five years. I tried very hard to avoid this at all costs. It doesn't make me happy. In fact, it upsets me very much.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That answers the question now. Okay, so I, I look at this, I cannot make finding three point two, or I can't make all of it. There's a clause in there that says the development does not disturb da, 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 private protected views. I can affirmatively say that it does not disturb private protected views because I don't know that yet. So I would, I would make a motion, like, it's a counter, counter motion to, um, say, let's continue this till after that May conference because I think we might well have some certainty by then. And then we could prevent having a situation where he gets further down the road and then the judge says no, or, you know, uh, let, let's let the court do its work if it's gonna be that soon. And, and maybe if they come back in May and they say, yeah, we had the conference and we're even more at loggerheads and we can't stand each other and this is gonna take two years. Then maybe at that point we make a different decision, but it seems like we've got a couple of months here that maybe they can work it out.
Um, well, really, there's no such thing as a counter motion. Uh, there's, we either have to vote on this motion first. If it fails, then you're gonna bring another motion back. But, uh, there is a motion on the table. Um, that the, the, the thing about it is that, that what he's probably talking about is a status conference. And in litigated matters, there are status conferences after status conferences after status conferences because.
But he's saying there's a negotiation on the table, so.
And there is that too. And, and, and I'm sure that there are all these things that are possible, but the fact is that what we have here is a clean sheet project. There is a claim, but, but that's not for us to decide. It's not for us to decide the merits of the claim. And if, if the applicant is cautious, he'll get his, his entitlement from, from the, uh, if, if we grant it. And then he will have to make a decision about how he wants to proceed. Because if he builds something, he may very well have to tear it down. But that, that is, I'll tell you, the, the, the. idea that we do not decide or intrude into civil disputes is from my own experience, the absolutely unvarying policy of the city going back to nineteen ninety-four. We just don't do it, never have, never should, and, and as far as I'm concerned, we, we, we won't do it now, so.
I can cite a counter example. I, I don't, I don't need to argue with you, but I, I could just assert that that's not entirely true.
And we get an indemnification as part of the process here.
Well, yes, and, and that, that, the, the opponents raise that issue. The indemnification comes every time anybody gets anything. The city never lets anybody do anything at all without getting an indemnification. That's job one. It's getting, it's in paragraph one. You get indemnified first, so it has nothing to do with this particular, with this particular case.
Nonetheless, I, I can affirmatively say that it doesn't disturb private protected views, so I, I can in good conscience vote yes on this project.
I have a question that may, may affect my vote. I think it was Mr. Sagapoor, if I said it right, he read sections and he said the LIP says that legally recorded easements are respected or something like that. Is that actually in the LIP?
Richard, Trevor?
I don't know what section he cited there. I'm not sure what we're referring to.
Can we ask him?
I don't know that would affect it.
Well, if we're, if we're, if the LIP says we have to respect, then we gotta respect. I, I don't know if it says that.
You wanna pull him back, you know, we can go look at this. I'm not sure what, I just.
I, I just, I ask him, maybe he knows the section and you can take a quick look.
We can ask him if he's, if he's available. Is Mr. Sadakpor available?
Yes, I'm available.
You know this particular section you're talking about?
I, I, I cannot quote because I do not, but the thing that I am, I am completely sure I wrote it down, is there are the height restriction that can be eighteen or lower. At the same time, somewhere else I read that the city is supposed to respect the easements and restrictions and they must be honored by the city. So I put two of them together that one of them says less than eighteen and this one is gonna be the defining factor.
All right, thank you very much. That was a question. We had a specific citation.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
I may. So when the LIP refers to easements, this is why I wanted to ask the neighbor. It's because it talks about open space and conservation easements and when you transfer a lot and retire it. So it's easements for public access. It's not easements related to private rights of views or issues like that.
Okay, the only thing that was peculiar about it is he said that there was a lis pendens recorded. I must say that, that surprises me that, that a lis pendens would be reported, recorded against the Sadakpor's property. I don't see what that would be for, but it's not relevant to this issue before us either. So if there's no further discussion, we will take a vote. There's a further discussion? Hearing none. Kathleen, would you take the call roll, please?
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I, I still make a motion.
Okay, with call roll, please, Kathleen.
Could you please tell me who made the second on that?
Dennis.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Somebody called Larry has their hand up. Do we use that? Somebody, who is that? Does that have anything to respond to? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll say yes then.
Thank you. Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Adios.
Stay safe. By the way, I got an appointment today. You can get them now.
I got one for tomorrow. Doctor Stadium.
I'm too young. I'm too young.
Good night.
Night, everyone.